Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd now like to ask Vice Mayor Hale, if she'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and join me in saying the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Moving on now to item number four, Presentations and Acknowledgements. We'll start with 4A. We have a proclamation this evening. It's our pleasure to present this proclamation honoring the rich culture and history of Hispanic and Latino Americans in Redwood City and across our nation. National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September fifteenth through October fifteenth, and my colleagues and I are honored to be joined by the Consulate General of Mexico, as well as other local organizations and partners, such as Arnaldo, Ariola, with our sister city Aguililla, Mexico, and Veronica Esquemes from Casa Circulo in recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month. I will now read excerpts of the proclamation. Whereas each year Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month by celebrating the history, culture, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. Whereas the day of September fifteenth is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and eighteenth respectively. And whereas Hispanics and Latinos represent approximately thirty-nine percent of Redwood City's population, making it the second-largest demographic in our community. And whereas activists Dolores Huerta encouraged involvement, we are needed, we have to be engaged, and get ourselves elected to school boards and city councils. Si se puede. And truly, we have seen this locally many times over in the counties, school boards, city councils, business community, and influential activists all throughout our great community. So therefore be it resolved that I Diane Howard, Mayor of Redwood City, on behalf of our city council and the people of Redwood City, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, National Hispanic Heritage Month, in honor of the rich culture that Hispanic Americans have brought to the Redwood City community and in recognition of the indelible footprints of Latino heritage in our daily lives. I would now like to invite Consul General Maria de los Romídeos Gomez Arno to give her remarks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm really grateful with the city of Redwood City, you yourself, Mayor, and all the members, the Vice Mayor, and all the members of the Council of Redwood City for this proclamation. We understand that the majority of the Latino are of Mexican origin, and we are also very proud that you have invited two representatives of the community, Veronica Esquemes, whom has been very important in promoting culture in Redwood City, and also the person representing the city of Aguililla in Michoacan, which is a sister city of Redwood City. So we really appreciate what our community has been contributing to the development and to the economy and the culture of Redwood City. And we just want to let the whole Council of Redwood City, that the Consulate General of Mexico in San Francisco is here to help make it stronger, the bridges that already connect Redwood City and Mexico and the Mexican community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Consul General Arno. Your words are lovely. Thank you for being with us this evening. I wanted to be sure, are there any other local organizations that have joined us tonight that I did not recognize? And if so, could you raise your hand to be recognized? Seeing none, again, welcome. It's lovely to have you with us, and I'm so glad we're able to present this proclamation to you. And we will continue to do that each year so that we always recognize the accomplishments and the contributions of our Latino community. Thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4B. It's a presentation by the San Mateo County Historical Association on the Carriage House Project. It's my pleasure to now introduce San Mateo County Historical Association member and former mayor of Redwood City Barbara Pierce, who will give us a presentation on the Carriage House Project.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you, Ms. Aguilar, for doing the presentation there for me. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, Councilmembers Aguirre Espinoza Garnica, G. Reddy, and Smith. Thank you for having us here tonight for this informational presentation. My name is Barbara Pierce. I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the San Mateo County Historical Association and Chair of the Carriage House Committee. Also here tonight are Association President Mitch Postal, Board of Directors and Carriage House Committee Member John Latora, and Project Architect Adolf Rosenkranz. We're very excited to present to you about this new addition to the History Museum block, where the Historical Association will be transforming a former San Mateo County parking lot behind the museum into two new galleries and an event venue. Next slide, please. The San Mateo County Historical Association operates three historic sites for the county of San Mateo, including the San Mateo County History Museum in downtown Redwood City, Woodside Store in Woodside, and the Sanchez Adobe in Pacifica, and provides programming for the historic Folter Stables. More than sixty-five thousand people come to the sites each year pre-COVID. Next slide, please. The mission of the San Mateo Historical Association is to inspire wonder and discovery through education about the cultural and natural history of San Mateo County. The Association provides extensive programming for the community and schools, as well as caring for artifacts and archives. Special focus is provided regarding the need for equity with additional support for schools with limited resources. The Association is also an active partner with the Redwood City community for events like Day of the Dead, Lunar Festival, Hometown Holidays, Fourth of July activities, Steam Fest, and Port Fest, as well as serving as a venue for private governmental and individual functions. Next slide, please. Go on for me. The History Museum opened its doors in downtown Redwood City in nineteen ninety-nine and has transformed the old county courthouse into a history museum with eight exhibit galleries featuring three-dimensional collections of objects associated with the history of the county and an archival collection ranging from the time of the Alone Indians to the present, including materials available for public research. The museum has been accredited by the American Alliance of Museums since nineteen seventy-two. Next slide, please. In twenty nineteen, the county moved the historic Lethrop House to the county parking lot at the rear of the museum block, presenting an opportunity to the Association to create a gallery for the more than thirty historic horse-drawn vehicles that the Association had preserved in storage for more than fifty years, and enabled us to tell the story of everyday life in the county when horses and horse-drawn vehicles were the mode of transportation prior to the age of automobiles. Next slide, please. This diagram shows the location of the museum block. The red outline is the location of the Lethrop House, and the green box is the location of the carriage house, where it will abut the annex that is not historic. Next slide, please. The carriage house concept evolved from a single-story structure into a three-story fifteen-thousand-square-foot, classically-designed building, which will provide the space needed to expand programs for the community. A new entrance to the carriage house on Marshall Street, near the corner closest to the Lethrop House, will be ADA-accessible and will help during busy-city events. Next slide. Thank you. These preliminary illustrations show initial concept for the three stories. The first floor with a new entry on Marshall Street features a changing exhibit of historic and future automobiles, hot rods, motorcycles, lowriders, all to attract new visitors to the museum and to downtown. The second floor, in the slide on the right, will house historic horse-drawn vehicles, telling the story of county life prior to the automobile. And then the rooftop third floor will provide a much-needed new venue location for programs, meetings, and events in downtown Redwood City, and will be available for rental to the public, businesses, and governmental groups. Next slide. Environmental review has been completed. Design is well underway, and the fundraising is eighty-five percent complete, with help from a major gift by TAD and Diane Toby. The Association is pursuing an active multi-year capital campaign for the eleven-point-five-million-dollar project. We're thrilled to bring this new venue to Redwood City and to provide the space needed to expand history programs for the community and schools. We hope that you will be excited as well to have this addition to Redwood City, and we look forward to your comments and questions. And we'd be happy to arrange a tour of the museum in person if you would like. Thank you so much for having us here tonight.
Thank you very much, former Mayor Pierce. It's nice to have you with us, and so nice to have Mitch Postal, John Latora, and Adolf Rosenkranz with us also. The drawings are quite wonderful, and thank you for respecting the dome and keeping that in mind, and I knew you would. But it also completes the corner of the most beautiful campus that we have in Redwood City, this wonderful resource that we have in the heart of our downtown. So I am so glad that you're doing this, that it's going to be open to the public. When do you anticipate it may be done?
We're being optimistic and hoping by the end of twenty twenty-two. Fingers crossed. And that may be the optimistic one. But we're working towards that goal. Thank you.
That's a wonderful goal. Let's see. Oh, I think that's just wonderful. And thank you so much for being with us, because I knew the public would want to hear more about this, especially when you start construction, everyone will want to know what's going on over there. So thank you so much, all of you, for being with us this evening.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Moving on to item number five, Public Comment on the Consent Calendar on Matters of Council Interest and on Items Not on the Agenda. At this time, we'll take comments, I mean, public comment, and I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk so she can facilitate the public comment. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. The instructions for public comment you can see on the screen, and we ask if you would like to make public comment at this time, to please raise your hand and keep your hand raised until you are recognized to speak, and also so that we can see how many speakers we do have. If you're joining us by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Give it about a minute. And this is the time for public comment on the Consent Calendar, Matters of Council Interest, and Items Not on the Agenda. At this time, we have three raised hands. Anybody wishing to speak for public comment, please raise your hand. Give it a few more seconds. Okay, we have three speakers. Each speaker will be given two minutes to speak. The timer will begin when she starts speaking. Our first speaker this evening is Margaret Becker. Margaret will be followed by a call-in user with the last digit zero zero six six, and our last speaker this evening will be Lawrence Purcell, so that is the order, and we'll start with Ms. Becker.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Howard and members of the council. I just wanted to make a brief comment in support of the amendments to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. I think that it's, these amendments are an important step, and I really commend staff for moving this forward. It may seem like it's a small step, but there's no one big fix to the affordable housing issue, so every little step counts, and this one is an important one. I do want to make mention, though, of another amendment that I would hope that council might take into consideration in the future, and that is making some changes to our Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance. My understanding is that considering making any changes to inclusionary zoning requires a nexus study. So I'd like to request that council consider this, requesting a nexus study, so that at some point, hopefully in, within the next year, our inclusionary zoning can potentially be increased. I really feel like that the time is right to increase the percentages, while currently it's twenty percent of inclusionary zoning that needs to go for moderate-low and very-low-income housing. That's good, but I think that we can do more, and we can ask for more from developers. So I'm hoping you will consider a nexus study so that we can possibly improve, increase our Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance percentage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Our next speaker is a call-in user with phone number ending in the digits zero zero six six. At this time, you can press star six to unmute yourself and begin.
Hi, Pam. It's Allison Madden. That's my phone number, ending in zero zero six six.
Good evening.
I'm assuming that the land swap is not consent. Is that accurate?
That's correct. That item is immediately following consent, so it's coming up pretty soon.
Thank you. I do want to speak now. I just want to give an update on the Dock Town trial. For everyone that's listening, it started August second, and we had closing arguments today. Judge Weiner of the Superior Court in Department Two heard the trial about two to three days a week all through August and September. There will be closing briefs. It involves inverse condemnation and the California Relocation Assistance Law, the application of it. Because removing Dock Town is a public project and program, also code enforcement qualifies under CRAWL, which is the California Relocation Assistance Law. And I wanted to report back that the State Lands Commission, Reed Bojano, who is the granted lands expert assigned to Redwood City, confirmed during the trial that the State Lands Commission does not need to authorize or approve allowing people to stay for a safety and security presence. There was apparently a mistake with Aaron Aknin and Mayor Bain in twenty nineteen. And the city is taking the position in trial, which is pretty hard to defend, that it's not closing Dock Town. They've had quotes down here from FERMA and another to assess the cost of fully removing Dock Town. And for a decade, it has not been operated as a going concern. It could have been maintained, updated, upgraded, and improved, and fully paid for itself, and made money. There are a hundred slips that can be rented out for commercial and recreational, and the people down here would like to stay and not take public taxpayer funds. And really, this should be a public access marina. The city manager has made it clear that the community engagement process for the inner harbor that the Planning Commission will do will not consider keeping a public access marina down here. And there appears to be no other public process. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Our final speaker for this portion of the meeting is Lawrence Purcell.
Hi. I think I'm going to speak at the first item. I didn't realize it was going to come next.
Is this for the property exchange?
Yes.
Yes, it's coming up shortly, and we are happy to hear from you at that time. Thank you, Mr. Purcell. And Mayor Howard, that concludes public comment for this portion.
Thank you. If anyone arrives late and would like to submit some public comment, they can send an email to thecitycouncil@redwoodcity.org, and it'll be added to the record. Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. I did want to ask our city attorney, Ms. Ramirez, if there was any information she would like to speak to, to clarify regarding the prior speaker. If not, that would be fine. I just wanted to allow you the time if there was any information that may have been incorrect.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, the prior speaker did speak to a trial that has concluded with oral arguments today. This is regarding actions that were taken by city officials several years ago in order to support Dock Town tenants as the city worked to come into compliance with state law. In twenty sixteen, the city ended residential uses at Dock Town Marina to meet its legal obligations under the public trust doctrine and its granting statutes. The city council at that time accompanied the action to end residential use with a plan to provide assistance to residential tenants at Dock Town, called the Dock Town Plan. The city provided Dock Town Plan benefits to households, facilitating their relocation. However, several residents have opposed the city's plans and filed lawsuits. To date, the city has successfully defended multiple lawsuits, including challenges to the city's authority to terminate residential use. Today, the court, as mentioned by the speaker, held closing argument on one of the remaining lawsuits, which will determine, among other things, whether California Relocation Assistance Law applies. Briefing should be complete in the next month, and a decision issued within ninety days. While litigation is ongoing, city staff continues to operate and maintain the marina for both residential and recreational users. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ramirez. Moving on to item number six, our Consent Calendar. Items on the Consent Calendar are routine in nature and are approved in one motion. At this time, I'd like to ask if any council members would like to either make a motion or if they have any questions about items on the Consent Calendar.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. And a second?
Second, G.
Thank you, Councilmember G. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll ask Ms. Aguilar to call the roll call, please.
Thank you. And we will start with Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Reddy.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale. Yes. And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica is absent.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. I'll now read all the items that we just approved. Amendment number one to Memorandum of Understanding between the San Mateo County Transportation Authority and the City of Redwood City and the Peninsula Corridor Joint Powers Board for the project study phase of the Whipple Avenue Grade Separation Project. Agreement with the City of San Carlos for Emergency Management Services. Amendment to the Agreement with Community Wellness and Crisis Response Team for Mental Health Partnership Services. Amendment number one to Agreement with Gilbane Building Company for Project Management Services for the Veterans Memorial Building, Senior Center YMCA Project, and Related Traffic Calming Solutions. Amendment number two to Agreement with ELS Architecture and Urban Design for Phase One Construction Administration Services for the Veterans Memorial Building/Senior Center YMCA Project and Related Traffic Calming Solutions. Approved the Live Performance Agreement between the City of Redwood City and Zope Circus and Related Resolution establishing a temporary time limit on parking spaces in the library parking lots. Zope Circus starts October the eighth. Keep it in mind. Number six, G. Twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two Extended Day Learning Services Agreement between the City of Redwood City and the Redwood City School District. Way of second reading and adopt an ordinance amending the Affordable Housing Ordinance to provide a preference for those who live, formerly lived, or work in Redwood City, ensure the concurrent delivery of affordable units and new development, and improve clarity and effectiveness. Approved minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, city council meetings. Approved claims and checks from September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, through October eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and the usual and necessary payments through October eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Moving on to item number eight, Staff Reports. We have no public hearings tonight. Item eight A, Property Exchange with the County of San Mateo to facilitate the construction of the Bloomquist Street Extension to support transportation and public safety and advance city priorities related to housing and homelessness. Our city manager Melissa Stevenson Diaz will introduce the item, and Assistant City Manager Alex Kojikian will give a presentation. Ms. Diaz?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. And before Alex begins the presentation, I wanted to thank the city council for their past guidance. And I'd actually like to thank the Ad-Hoc Committee of the council, which has worked very closely with staff on the presentation and the proposal that's recommended to you this evening. Alex has been our lead negotiator for the last several years, and I appreciate his leadership on this initiative. It's very complex and very important to the city and the county and our region. Our city attorney, Veronica Ramirez, and several community development and transportation staff, including Mark Munzer, James O'Connell, and Patty Schrottenbauer have provided essential assistance. I also appreciate that San Mateo County County Manager Mike Caligie has been directly involved in this work and the work of his team in the last several years. And I know that he and his staff member Adam Eli are present this evening. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Alex to begin sharing more information about the recommended exchange. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Good evening, Mayor Howard and members of the city council. I'm Alex Kojikian. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the city. And the item before you this evening is the city-owned property exchange with the county. The proposed property exchange advances multiple city priorities, including improving circulation and public safety, supporting increased county services for homeless individuals in Redwood City, and preserving approximately ten acres of city property adjacent to the water for future community uses. The recommended terms address community feedback received over more than a decade related to housing, transportation, recreation, and economic vitality. The city council's City-owned Property Ad-Hoc Committee actively supported the development of the proposal and joined staff in recommending it to the full council. So just a little overview of the presentation outline. We'll cover background and give a little bit of aerial site orientation of the area that we're discussing this evening. Going to touch upon major priorities that are part of this property exchange. We'll talk about key deal terms and council action, and then the timeline and next steps. And we have two questions for council consideration this evening. The first question is, does the city council have questions regarding how the proposal supports city council priorities and prior direction? And two, does the city council have questions for county representatives related to the proposed exchange? So as we will describe this evening, the proposed property exchange advances city council policies and priorities going back more than a decade. It also addresses one of the most pressing issues we face today: homelessness. The city council's Ad-Hoc Committee, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and Councilmember Reddy have been instrumental in shaping the proposal. So now we'll go into a little bit of site orientation. So now we'll go into a little bit of site orientation, and we'll begin with an aerial orientation to the inner harbor area. We will be discussing sites in this area east of Highway 101 between Bear Island on the top left of this map and the county jail at the bottom right of the map. The city owns the parcels marked in red, which are 1469 and 1402 Maple. And then the county owns the parcel in yellow, which is 1580 Maple. A private party, the Carlisle Group, owns 1548 Maple, which is in orange and has approval to construct 131 townhomes on the site. So we'll first start off with 1548 Maple, which is 131 townhome development that has been approved by the city in 2018 for this location. An environmental impact report and development agreement were part of the approval process. Among other provisions, the development agreement commits the developer to build a portion of the Bloomquist extension if the city arranges control for the necessary property to build the new roadway. We'll now cover the 1580 Maple parcel in the middle of the screen. This parcel is owned by San Mateo County and is currently used as a homeless shelter. It also includes the former site of the county women's jail, which has since been demolished. On your screen here, the city owns the 1469 Maple parcel. It is not developed, and currently the city is leasing a portion of the site to local auto dealers to store their vehicles. And this is the site that we are in discussion this evening for the proposed property exchange. The city also owns 1402 Maple, a portion of the parcel, which is currently being used for the city's temporary safe parking program for individuals living in RVs. The city also leases a portion of the parcel to the County of San Mateo for their property development unit offices. And it also leases a portion to the Bear Island Aquatic Center, also known as BIAC, which encompasses the remainder of the waterfront portion of the property for recreational water access and facilities. We considered an exchange involving a portion of this parcel last year in July, but did not proceed based on city council direction. So the proposed property exchange. Here's an aerial view of the proposed exchange. Shown and outlined in blue is the city's two-and-a-half-acre parcel at 1469 Maple. Highlighted and outlined in red is the county's two-acre parcel at 1580 Maple. As part of the property exchange, the county has a five-year option period to potentially ground lease from the city the portion of the county parcel not needed for the Bloomquist extension. This allows the city to construct the Bloomquist extension, which is shown here in the solid yellow area, and leaves approximately one and a half acres, which is outlined in red here on the screen, that could be used for other uses, including potential additional affordable housing or permanent supportive affordable housing. The proposed deal terms for the county's lease option include the city to own and provide the county with a five-year option to ground lease from the city the one-and-a-half-acre remnant remainder parcel for affordable housing or permanent supportive affordable housing. The lease, the land lease, would be up to 65 years. There would be nominal rent of $100 for the term in light of the required affordable housing use. There would be development timing requirements. The ground lease would terminate if the county does not move forward with an affordable housing development project within five years after exercising the ground lease option. The city can move forward with its very own affordable housing projects thereby terminating the county's option at any time prior to the county exercising the lease option. The county will pay all development fees for the future project on the remnant parcel. The county will attend and present their proposed project conceptual to the city council and the community to solicit feedback regarding the aesthetics and architectural characteristics of their contemplated projects. I now like to turn the presentation over to Mayor Howard and the City on Property Committee. Mayor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Kojikian. Supporting housing for all is a top goal for our community, and we have an ambitious work plan. One of the most common concerns we hear from our residents is about homelessness. We want to help people to get into housing and avoid the community impacts associated with the homeless encampments. This exchange would enable the county to build a navigation center with 240 sleeping units, providing temporary living facilities and services to help people move into permanent housing. We understand the county is exploring the use of modular units that can be installed quickly. The county also will have units for services along with a commercial kitchen, dining hall, community building, training center, outdoor respite and recreation space, storage, and a parking area. We asked the county to plan for high-quality landscaping, and the designs we have seen are very attractive. County representatives are present tonight if the city council would like to ask any questions about their plans. In addition to the navigation center, county representatives have let us know they are very interested in the possibility of building affordable housing on the portion of 1580 Maple that remains after the Bloomquist extension, excuse me, is built. With the development of a new navigation center and transitional housing, it will bring the county very close to its goal of functional zero for homelessness for San Mateo County. And we in Redwood City are very proud to be part of that goal. Working together, we're helping to meet urgent housing needs in Redwood City. And we're hoping to advance the county and the City of Redwood City's goals to end homelessness for our most vulnerable residents. I'd now like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alex. And exactly where you just landed is what was so important to, I know, our committee, the importance of making progress towards homelessness. But that's not the only merit of this project. And so transportation, if you think back to our strategic plan as a city, our top priority is housing. Our second priority is transportation. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the merits of this project through a transportation lens. So developing the Bloomquist extension is going to allow for easier community access to our waterfront. It's also a step towards a better circulation east of the 101 for our residents living there. So this image that we're looking at here is from the draft inner harbor specific plan. And it shows the Bloomquist Road in blue with a bike boulevard in yellow and on Maple Street next to the police department. And then there's a lane, I wish I had a pointer, which shows the green lane that provides access to the waterfront. Thank you very much, whoever is doing that. So the property exchange will actually bring us one step closer to the vision shown here. It also helps us to ensure that those residents that are living or working east of the 101 have additional ways of entering or leaving the area, which is a key concern in the event of an emergency. We have heard from many residents who have been impacted, for example, by the Whipple exit closures. So in approving the development plans for 1548 Maple, the city is requiring the developer to construct this section of the Bloomquist extension. So this means that the developer will fund road construction as a community benefit instead of using taxpayer funds. Now I'm going to hand it off to Councilmember Ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. And it was such a pleasure to work on this committee, on this project. I'm really proud of this recommendation that we're bringing to council tonight. Many in our community are interested in increased access to the city's waterfront. This interest came up regularly during the drafting of the 2015 Harbor Specific Plan. Although that plan wasn't formally adopted, we have confirmed that the kinds of amenities envisioned at that time could be accommodated even after the property exchange occurs. The city would still own about 10 acres of property adjacent to the water after the exchange. We asked a consultant to develop a conceptual plan so we can envision the possibilities of what could fit on the city property following the property exchange. Conceptually, the Bay Trail, shown in red, could be extended and boating amenities could be along the water. There would be room for an amphitheater, a plaza, a promenade, and a tot lot. A sport field and a water tower. And the water tower, I should say, our historic water tower, also could be incorporated into the design. Sea level rise improvements could also be included in the future park development. This illustration is meant to provide a sense of scale. However, it is not a firm plan. Funds have been committed for community engagement beginning next spring to complete the planning work. With over 10 acres of city property available even after the land exchange, there are many options for supporting recreation, open space, water access, and trail access in the area. And now I'd like to turn it back to our Assistant City Manager, Alex Kojikian. Thank you.
Before I jump into the next slide, I just really want to thank our City on Property Committee because they have really done outstanding work over the past year, either negotiating, doing engagement, and getting us to this point. So my thanks to them. And so I'm just gonna briefly cover just other key deal terms. There are a few other terms to highlight as part of this property exchange. First is that the county will provide five on-demand housing units for Redwood City residents at the navigation center. What we've heard from our homeless outreach teams is when they go out into the field or go into an encampment, being able to connect homeless residents directly to shelter bed space sometimes can be challenging. And to have five on-demand units and to be able to offer a safe place to sleep that evening is critical. And so these on-demand housing units will be an integral part for us to really work to bring our Redwood City residents who are experiencing homelessness off the streets. Second item is that the county will pay city development fees as part of the navigation centers for utilities based on increased capacity of the site for a total up to $390,000. And then the county has agreed to pay one-third of the old shelter demolition costs, the current Maple Street shelter, when that needs to be demolished. And that is up to $175,000 of support from the county. The county can lease back the existing Maple Street shelter from the city until November 1st, 2022. This is because we are working within timing constraints to be able to have the property be given to the private 1548 developer to complete the Bloomquist Extension construction project. And should the county stay over the November 1st, 2022 date, they would pay $5.5 million in liquidated damages, understanding that this term could potentially be extended in the future by both parties mutually if it's agreed upon. So there are three actions required to complete the property exchange. First is to amend the IR associated with the 1548 Maple Development Project. Additionally, the council would need to approve the property exchange between the city and the county and direct the city manager to complete negotiations between the city, county, and owners of 1548 Maple. This agreement would allow three of these things. The first is to allow the 1548 Maple property owners to move excess soil from their property to 1469 Maple. Soil has to be moved for the Bloomquist extension to be constructed as the first part of the process. And then also soil is needed on a portion of the 1469 Maple parcel to raise the site to protect against sea level rise. Then this evening, we have an amended and revised motion, and it's to allow interim access for 1548 Maple owners to park construction vehicles and store construction supplies on a portion of 1580 and 1469 Maple. And this will allow the efficient development of the Bloomquist Extension construction project. And then finally, city staff will ensure that 1548 Maple owners coordinate construction of their townhome development with the construction of the Bloomquist Extension. So just on timeline and next steps, we have city council action this evening. And then tomorrow morning, first thing at 9:00 AM, the County Board of Supervisors is set to discuss and take action on this agreement. Should both governing boards approve a property exchange, then there would be a 45-day escrow period. And then additionally, the city, county, and Carlisle will complete negotiations of a tri-party agreement. And then that pretty much covers the timeline for the property exchange process. And so this concludes my presentation. And as Melissa and Mayor Howard have stated, County Manager Mike Calagie and County Staff Adam Ely are here to answer any questions as well. And so now I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Howard to take public comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kojikian. And I really would like to thank you and our staff who were so instrumental in helping us do the research and coordinate the outreach. It was really a pleasure to work with all of you and was also a pleasure to work with the subcommittee on this. And I think we were able to accomplish a great deal as far as community outreach. So thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to know if council has any clarifying questions before I open it up for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment, and I'll turn it over to our city clerk at this time. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time to take public comment on item 8A. This is the property exchange with the County of San Mateo to facilitate the construction of Bloomquist Street Extension to support transportation and public safety and advance city priorities related to housing and homelessness. This is the presentation that we've just heard. If you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand and keep your hand raised so that we could see how many speakers we have. If you're joining us by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. We'll give it another seconds. At this time, we have 13 raised hands, 14? Okay, so we have 14 raised hands. Okay, great. Our first speaker will be Isabella Chu. Each speaker will be given two minutes, and the timer will start when you begin speaking. After Ms. Chu will be Alex Melendrez. And our last speaker on this topic is going to be Lawrence Purcell. And Ms. Chu, you can go ahead.
Good evening, council. I don't have much to say. I just wanted to express how incredible I think the work done on this project was, how excited I am to see Redwood City offer the supportive housing. Obviously, being stably housed in a high-opportunity area is one of the most important determinants of health. And I often think about, one of the city council members in Emeryville was actually homeless when he was a kid, as a youth. And he is now an attorney and a city council member. And so when we provide housing in a high-opportunity area like Redwood City, it's not just going to extend the life of these individuals, but give them a real opportunity to get on their feet and get out of homelessness. So all of it's amazing. The best part's the housing, but everything about it is just fantastic. Super excited to see this happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. Our next speaker is Alex Melendrez, and following Alex will be John Carlson.
Hello, Mayor. City council and city staff. I'm Alex Melendrez. I'm a lead with Peninsula for Everyone. We're an advocacy group that focuses on more inclusive and sustainable, a more inclusive and sustainable peninsula by advocating for building for housing, better transportation, and protecting renters. I really want to applaud the City of Redwood City Council, staff, the leadership of the county for making progress with this land swap. I'm particularly supportive for the same reasons that the last speaker just mentioned, for the benefits of providing... for the benefits of providing shelter to vulnerable community members. I mean, there's, I've been involved in a lot of housing discussions, and there's no housing issue that is closer to my heart than providing shelter to those who are experiencing homelessness. I'm sure you've heard this before, but homelessness is a compromising temporary state that can be changed. You can provide residents with basic human protections, basic shelter that many of us never give a second thought to. Something as simple as just avoiding the rain, using the bathroom, or sleeping. I know it's, I know it can be complicated, detailed. But if you keep going on this path that you're on, you're going to have a deal that not just makes all parties happy, but does some significant moral good. The manifestation of policy and leadership action that restores some dignity and provides shelter. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Melendrez. Our next speaker is John Carlson. Mr. Carlson will be followed by Ian Bane.
Yes, good afternoon. Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and City Council. I'm John Carlson. I'm the President of Fair Island Aquatic Center. Also known as BIAC. I just wanted to express that from BIAC's perspective, this deal is significantly better than the last one as well. I think that the, you know, we've advocated that waterfront is precious and that the recreational opportunities for using the waterfront are important as a community and that this makes it significantly, it leaves the possibility open to continue to use the waterfront for recreational uses. And I think that's a great outcome. So thank you for the improvement, and we support the improved project. I also wanted to give a quick shout out to Mr. Calagie and Eli from the county because of their support and general neighborliness down there at their, what is currently their PDU unit. And there are our neighbors down there and have been also very helpful. So thank you to them.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Our next speaker is former Redwood City Mayor Ian Bane. And following former Mayor Bane will be Susan Houston. Welcome, Ian. Ian, are you able to unmute yourself? There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Agalar. I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was unmuting myself. Thank you, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, members of the council. I want to start by thanking the committee for their hard work on this and let you know that I support this land exchange. I know how challenging it's been to balance so many competing community priorities. And I want to thank the county officials who worked on this as well, led by Mike Calagie. I especially want to thank Alex Kajikian, who even when the talks went sideways, he persevered and we ended up with a much better agreement than I think was previously presented to the council. This agreement is an important step in addressing the challenges of homelessness in our community, the traffic management and access to the waterfront, as well as the the community park and the open space itself. It's not the only solution to these challenges, but it's part of it. It's also an important step in giving the community what they, what they want and what they need and what they've asked for. I feel much better that this is the right thing for the city to do. I'm confident in the city's ability to design a park space that works not only to meet community needs, but also anticipating sea level rise. And once again, I want to thank you again for all your hard work on this. I think in the words of Mr. Calagie, this is a win-win solution.
Thank you, Ian. Our next speaker is Susan Houston, and following Ms. Houston will be Geeta Dev. Welcome, Ms. Houston.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Howard and members of the council. My name is Susan Houston, actually. I'm the Vice President of Older Adult Services at Peninsula Family Service, and we operate the Fair Oaks Adult Activity Center at the Community Center. I support the proposed land exchange and especially the new Navigation Center. Through our work at Fair Oaks, we have seen a growing number of unhoused people who are 55 years and older and also have a variety of unmet needs. A Navigation Center with the five on-demand units for immediate placement of unsheltered individuals referred by Redwood City staff and our partners will be critical in getting people rehoused with the immediate support that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Our next speaker is Geeta Dev. Ms. Dev will be followed by Katie Getz. Welcome, Ms. Dev.
Good evening, Mayor Howard and council members and staff. My name is Geeta Dev. I'm speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club Sustainable Land Use Committee. I want to thank everyone who has worked so hard on this project. When we saw it last, last year, we had a lot of concerns about it. I would say that it is quite improved in that the housing. And I want to make a couple of points. One is it's good that the housing has moved away from the cement factory and cement plant. And that's something that we care very much about because we are very much about sustainability. I have worked all my professional career in low-income and very low-income housing. And so I was very concerned about that issue. I do want to express concern, and I have talked to Alex Kajikian a bit. There isn't much information in the staff report about it, but here's my concern that I had raised last time, which was that the Bloomquist Extension might become basically another lane of 101. We've certainly experienced that in Mountain View where we cannot get out of the Sierra Club building because the feeder roads are just stopped. So unless somebody lets you in, you cannot get in. So that has, has us concerned about the heavy industry at the Granite Rock. And I've been told that they are going to look at ways to slow traffic down. That would be extremely important. The other thing is I really would hope that we are taking resilience into consideration. After Len Merriman gave us such a long lecture a few weeks ago, I think that's something that we need to keep in mind, and maybe raising all the land is not necessarily the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dev. Our next speaker is Katie Getz, and following Katie will be Jerry Pierce.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing all of us this evening. We appreciate you giving the time to so many speakers. My name is Katie, and I serve as pastor of Woodside Road United Methodist Church here in Redwood City, and I'm also a member of the Peninsula Solidarity Cohort. I am excited to see a year and change later the movement towards creating a new shelter to replace the Maple Street Shelter. Watching that facility age and knowing that many of our most vulnerable residents live there or lack access to shelter because there's not space for them there. I am just grateful that the county is going to have the opportunity to build a new shelter and house our most vulnerable residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Getz, very much. Our next speaker is Jerry Pierce, and following Mr. Pierce will be Margaret Becker. Welcome, Jerry. Are you able to unmute yourself? There you go.
It's a two-step process.
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Jerry Pierce, a longtime resident of Redwood City. I am concerned over a few aspects of the plan. First, the newly formed recreation area makes sense if the seasonal wetlands in 1469 Maple can be used by the city. I have not heard definitively that we will be able to use this land. Why not make that a contingency of the swap that Redwood City must be able to use that land? Second, please appoint a public working group to review, help design, and propose uses of the remaining inner harbor land. Don't just assign this to a consultant or have a formal working session. Many of our citizens worked for years on the Inner Harbor Precise Plan and could be up to speed on the discussions. The biggest ask from the meeting in July 2020 was to include the public in planning uses for Inner Harbor. Honestly, I think you let us down for this first part of the land swap. Don't do it again for the rest of the space. Three, the land swap makes sense if it was really a swap, but this leaseback options are very concerning. It doesn't sound like a land swap. It sounds like another gift to the county. I would like to hear more about that. 1580 could be a good resource for the community, not necessarily another place for the county. And finally, there are many places that the county owns that could serve the homeless needs. The county says they've looked for years for a good place. What about the first level of their fancy new parking structure on veterans? Perfect location for a navigation center, but no, unfortunately, this county prioritizes convenient parking spots over people in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, very much. Our next speaker is Margaret Becker, and Ms. Becker will be followed by Mike Dunham. Welcome, Margaret.
Thank you. I just, many of you know me on council. I'm the Chair of the Housing and Human Concerns Committee, and I just want to make clear that my comments tonight are as a resident and not in any way in my capacity on housing and human concerns. So thank you, Mayor Howard and members of council for listening to my comments. I just want to say that I am so in support of this, of this plan. And I really want to thank everybody who had to go back to the drawing board after 2020 and find solutions to the concerns about this project. It took, I'm sure, a great deal of creativity, determination, and collaboration. And I just think that this project has so many key benefits for our community. The Inner Harbor specific plan may now actually come to fruition. Public open space, recreational amenities, waterfront access all seem to be just really a huge benefit to residents. I did, I do agree with the comments of our previous speaker about public involvement in exactly how that takes shape. I really do look forward to participating in what the final plan is. The new location of the NAVS NAV Center makes really good sense. I believe that that will find an alternative place for our valuable car dealerships to use for their vehicles. There are just so many aspects of the NAV Center that are going to benefit our community. And I think one of the most important are the five units that will be available for immediate placement for unsheltered individuals. The Bloomquist Extension is also very important. I'm running out of time, but please approve all three recommended actions.
Thank you, Ms. Becker, very much. Our next speaker is Mike Dunham, and followed by Mr. Dunham will be Allison Madden.
Good evening, council. My name's Mike Dunham. I have worked in Redwood City for six years and just two months ago moved to Redwood City and excited to both live and work in the same place. And I just, I also lead with Peninsula for Everyone. You heard my peer Alex Melendrez speak earlier about some of the things we advocate for. And I just wanted to reiterate a lot of the comments you've heard tonight, that this is a really thoughtful project that's going to do a ton of good for the city and many of our most vulnerable neighbors. And I'm excited to be now living in a city that really makes this a priority. The place I used to live maybe was less good at that. And I really appreciate that about Redwood City and what I've sort of observed in my time here. I'll also add that, you know, I think when you're trying to balance public inputs and getting things done, I urge you all to take, especially dealing with folks experiencing homelessness, working as quickly as possible to do as much good as quickly as possible. I think these are exactly the types of projects that if you, you look at other cities and the councils decide to endlessly debate where to place a homeless shelter navigation center. And I appreciate that you all are taking action tonight. So thank you all for the work. Thank you, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, and Councilmember Ready. It's a really great plan, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Our next speaker is Allison Madden, and following Ms. Madden is Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Pam. Thank you. This proposal starts with a suggestion that it alleviates homelessness by getting rid of the shelter. This doesn't make sense. That site always had a work program, a shelter, and a jail. You can have a NAV Center, the shelter, in lieu of affordable housing, and the entire area is going to have to be razed. It does nothing to mitigate climate change. The county should keep the land, and it should keep a minimum-security women's jail there. The reason why? They moved the women to 1350 Maple into a fully maximum-security jail due to overcrowding at their old facility. But they were only overcrowded because the county was bringing men there from the minimum security from Maguire. All women right now in 1350, that when we go to bed and we drive by there, all of them are being held for every kind of petty offense, drug and alcohol, small property crimes. 22-plus-hour lockdown every day. They're having nervous breakdowns. That was not the case before. That 1350 jail is a teardown. It has no yard, no sun, no light. The pipes break in the basement, constant construction, family visits are canceled. The snow job that it's a compassionate facility is a gaslight. I 100% agree with Mr. Pierce. In the discovery for the suit, I talked about hundreds of emails asked for a public process, but none was done. The Daily Journal quoted our city manager as saying no public process was necessary. I agree with Mr. Pierce. It was a letdown to go forward without that, even for this small piece. I also want to say the city attorney was wrong. The current suit is that the Dock Town plan does not satisfy the Relocation Act law. That's the whole point. But we can save lots of tax money by Dock Town staying. Also, this fluidity of movement, it's not necessary. In general, these frontage roads, they back up, they idle, it's unsafe for children. Bloomquist doesn't need to go through. And how is it a good thing that someone else is paying for it? The whole thing is a disaster.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes, and Mr. Grimes will be followed by Ken Chan.
Good evening, council members, honorable mayor. Before I just get started, I want to object to that last comment in its entirety. My name is Jordan Grimes. I'm a lead member of housing advocacy group Peninsula for Everyone and the political director of the Peninsula Young Democrats. I'm here tonight in strong support of the land exchange and navigation center proposal. Like others, I really want to commend staff, council, and the entire county for moving forward with this plan. It furthers equity, centers our unhoused neighbors, and is a huge boon for diversity in the community at large. As both the Bay Area's housing crisis and the pandemic rage on, it is more important than ever that we get as many units of homeless and transitional housing online as soon as possible. So I applaud you for putting the urgent needs of the unhoused ahead of the aesthetic preferences, whims, and wants of the comfortably housed, and look forward to seeing the advancement of the property exchange tonight. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Our next speaker is Ken Chan, and follow, following Mr. Chan will be Lawrence Purcell.
Hello, members of the Redwood City City Council. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm an organizer of Housing Ship Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with our communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality homes throughout San Mateo County. I first like to express our thanks and appreciation to both staff and leadership here at Redwood City for putting together this report around this land exchange. We would not be having this discussion would, would it not be for all of your hard work? So thank you. And that is why I'm here tonight. On behalf of HLC, I'd like to lend your support to the Redwood City staff recommendation and would like to urge council tonight to approve all three of the needed actions to make the real property exchange agreement happen between the city and the County of San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Our next speaker is Lawrence Purcell, and Mr. Purcell will be followed by Joel Cohen.
Hi, everybody. My name's Larry Purcell. I am the Director of the Catholic Worker House in Redwood City. We've been there for 45 years, working with extremely poor people in our community that are members of our community. And this program that is being suggested tonight is very exciting. It is housing. It is housing for sisters and brothers that we're close to and that need housing. They don't, they don't need encampments. They don't need tents. They don't need shelters. They need permanent housing that's affordable. And I strongly approve, support the ideas that are coming tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. Our next speaker is Joel Cohen, and will be followed by Greg Greenway.
Hi there. My name is Joel Cohen. Thank you for, thank you for hearing me. I'm calling to speak in support of the homelessness center. California has a major homelessness issue as a, as a percentage of the overall national homeless population. We, we have a much larger share than would be expected for our population. And I think anything that can be done to help provide people with support and housing and, you know, to sort of generally get them off the streets and get them the help they need is a, is an absolutely fantastic thing to do. And I'm so happy that, that you're, that you're taking this effort to, to help this. And I hope that you will continue to, to do so and make, make housing more available for both, for both the homeless people of, of Redwood City and the, and those who seek to, to live and move to Redwood City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Our next speaker is Greg Greenway, and following Mr. Greenway will be our last speaker, Pat Mapelli.
Thank you, Mayor Howard and members of the council. I'm just speaking strongly and enthusiastically in support of this agreement with the county for the land exchange. It really is an excellent outcome of a long negotiating process between the city and the county. It, it addresses all kinds of stakeholder concerns. It, it addresses the need for housing and homelessness and allows the navigation center to proceed. It responds to concerns that the Seaport Industrial Association expressed about land use compatibility and, and the location of this site next to an industrial site versus across the street, across Maple Street, where it lands with this agreement. It preserves options for waterfront access, community uses, recreational uses, facilitates the Bloomquist extension, and honors the inner harbor planning process that occurred some time ago, not, not approved as a plan, but as a member of, of the Inner Harbor Task Force. This, this really embodies all kinds of goals that, 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 that plan and that process expressed. What I really want to say is just acknowledge how hard the city worked with the county to negotiate this on, on behalf of the city and the community. I want to thank city manager Melissa Stevenson Diaz and the Assistant City Manager Alex Gojikian. I know behind the scenes you worked really hard with the county. Also acknowledge the work on the county's part, Mike Calagie and, and his team to, to, to get this, you know, sort of overused term win-win, but really a win-win for the county and the community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Greenway, very much. Our last speaker is Pat Mapelli.
Good evening, Mayor and, and council members. My name is Pat Mapelli. I'm the Land Use Manager for Granite Rock. I just want to express my gratitude on behalf of Granite Rock for the city and the county being willing to go back to the drawing board and, and really think this thing through and come up with really an all win, as Greg just said, for all stakeholders. I think it's a, it's, it's an optimal opportunity for, for the city to get Bloomquist Extension, for the, the, the parks and open space to be able to be available at the waterfront and to put compatible uses adjacent to each other. So again, on behalf of Granite Rock, I would just like to say thank you to staff and, and the county and, and the council for all working together for an all win.
Thank you, Mr. Mapelli, very much. That concludes public comment for this item. If you were not able to make public comment and wish to submit comments in writing to the council, you may do so at council@redwoodcity.org. Mayor Howard.
Thank you very much, Ms. Aguilar, and thank you to our speakers this evening for coming. I'd now like to open it up for council discussion, and I'd like to remind my colleagues that our county manager, Mike Calagie, is here if anyone has questions of the county. So who would like to begin at this time? Who would like to begin the discussion? And the questions are before you on the screen that we're being asked to answer. Councilmember G, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Might as well get the conversation started. So I want to thank the committee and the prior committee for all the hard work. I know there's been countless hours of effort to try to balance different needs. I won't say competing needs, but a great number of different needs in this area of our city. So I was curious between our county manager and, and maybe Alex, if you can share with us some of the milestone moments if the council were to approve tonight. For example, while you articulated what happens next if council approves. But, you know, if the council approves, when might the navigation center be completed? When might Bloomquist be completed? When might other things be completed? Just the major pieces, so we all can manage our expectations that this isn't going to be happening on Monday next week.
Mike, do you want to go ahead and jump in about the navigation center? And I'll take on the transportation piece and the park piece.
Absolutely. Thanks, Alex. Through the mayor, yes, Councilmember G, that's a, it's a great question. And I got to tell you that we're very excited about this potential opportunity here. And our plan is to get started right away. We have been visiting various manufacturers of, of the homes, the modular homes that we'd like to install here. We've had an architect onboard, really working on the design. And we feel that this project is really shovel-ready. Once approved and, and once closed, we would move to immediately raise the soil. And at the same time, we'd be ordering those modulators so that we're doing a couple of things at the same time. We have a construction company onboard who's familiar how to put this together. We will be applying for home key money at the end of this month. And that's why it was so important for, for the board to, to hear this. And we hope that it will be funded, but we're committed to this one way or another. I believe that the board will find a way to get this done. It is too important an issue to let it go, you know, one extra day. So we are all in on this. It is the highest priority for us in the county right now to, to get this shelter done. And the, the beauty of this shelter is that it is going to revolutionize the way we treat our homeless. And when we talk about a win-win-win, we talk about the, the city, the county, but most importantly, the homeless and the way that we treat them with wraparound services in individual rooms where we can really deal with the issues that has caused them to experience homelessness. So we're very excited about this, and we will be getting started right away.
Mike, is it aspirational to say next year you look to have it open?
Absolutely not. We, we are going to push this as hard as we can. And poor Adam Eli, he's, you know, hears it every day from me. And, but he has been outstanding. He's worked with your incredible staff. And I just want to also say thank you very much to the, to the committee of council members, to Ms. Stevenson Diaz, who's worked so hard on this and so tirelessly on this, and really to Alex and Adam, who have really worked on the details.
Great, thank you. Alex, the other milestone?
Yeah, so on the transportation front, we're actually, we began two weeks ago having coordination meetings with the fifteen forty-eight Maple Street developer about starting Phase One of the Bloomquist extension. And that is the portion between what is right now Bloomquist and Maple, right behind the police department, to go ahead and begin construction work on that portion of the property. And should the council move forward and ahead with a property exchange, then we would see, we would probably look at some movement of dirt and some progress here, probably by the end of October, beginning then. And so what you'll see is over the next eight to twelve months, we're still working on logistics to complete at least the portion going behind the police department, going to the current Maple Street shelter. That would be the goal. There still is a lot of logistics that we're working out, not only with the county, but also with the fifteen forty-eight Maple Street developers. And so that tri-party agreement that we have for a council decision this evening also would facilitate making progress and moving forward with starting initial construction of the Bloomquist extension. In terms of the longer-term use, right now, the Bloomquist extension would terminate at Redwood Creek. But what we would look at is in the future, between federal, state grants, and then also just future developments in the Bear Island, inner harbor, and out at Pacific Shores and that whole area east of one oh one to help pay and contribute into a future bridge to make the linkage to the Bear Island neighborhood. But that is more longer range on the outer years. Right now, we're just trying to complete Phase One of the Bloomquist extension, which would be from what is currently Maple and Bloomquist and terminating at Redwood Creek. And that would be completed by the fifteen forty-eight Maple Street developer. In terms of the park or future Bayfront Park, as was mentioned in the presentation, we would look at visioning and hiring a consultant and up to councils. We'll, we'll talk further with the council about how we want to engage in that process. But that would take place in the spring of next year. That's when we, we plan to start. So we would start the planning process right now internally with staff with more to come, hopefully in the spring of twenty twenty-two.
Great, thank you, Alex. You know, I'm just going to just jump in to say, you know, again, thank you to everyone for all the hard work that are here currently and those in the past. Just, it's a big heavy lift, but I think there's some great outcomes here trying to find the right balance. I'm fully supportive. And if the council approves tonight, you know, to our county manager, I hope our other cities in the peninsula will raise their hand to do their share to help get to Vision Zero in San Mateo County. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Councilmember G. I, I totally agree with your comments, and I'd like to thank our county manager, Mr. Calagie, for being here this evening to answer questions that may come up. I appreciate it. Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we know that Redwood City has the most homeless folks in the county. And when I read about the five units, I was just wondering, is that the limit for Redwood City? Or is it a portion? And how, how, how do we decide that? What are the priorities or considerations on who is placed in these homeless? Is it by severity? Is it by city? You know, what is the allotment? And I'm glad we have, you know, five that are going to be, that they're going to be on-demand housing. But in general, I just wanted to know how that came about and what will be the numbers for the fact that we have so many. It might be premature. Maybe we don't know all of the numbers yet, but, and how we're going to designate them. But if there was a, you know, a need to say, yes, we want to make sure we have five on demand, what are the other requirements or considerations?
I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll jump in on this. So on the on-demand units, this is kind of a new innovative way that we're looking at from, from Redwood City. And this was a request from our Terry Chan, our Human Services Manager, Homeless Services Manager, and what we were hearing from our service providers who serve our homeless residents. The, the five unit, the five on-demand units is just at any given time to have bed space at the navigation center. And once those individuals get into the on-demand unit, they would then be moved into the coordinated entry system. So nothing would stop the city or Redwood City homeless residents from being part of the coordinated entry system to be part of the full, you know, the on-hold units are the same as the rest of the navigation center. It just is holding it for Redwood City staff or service providers for Redwood City homeless residents in our encampments. And it just allows for a swift resolution to bring a homeless, homeless resident off the streets right into housing. And then they would then go through the coordinated entry system into the regular shelter system as well. So that, that's kind of how it would work.
So we don't, we don't really know what, you know, considerations are going to be because I know there's always going to be more demand than beds and shelters.
I think Mr. Calagie would like to answer part of that question.
Yes, if I may, through the mayor. Councilmember Gary, our hope is really to create enough beds in this county to accommodate all those who need shelter. And as we know right now, Redwood City is kind of ground zero for those that are experiencing homelessness. And quite frankly, I believe that a, a great portion of this shelter will be utilized for those individuals in Redwood City. And we're not done yet. We're looking at buying more hotels to accommodate the, the, those experiencing homelessness in a non-congregate setting. And then we may look at trying to expand what we have in South San Francisco to make it non-congregate, more attractive for those individuals to come off the street and live in a, a single room, a residential unit while getting services. So we hope that this strategy will eliminate any need for those who want to get off the street and into housing. But certainly, we'll be taking care of those in Redwood City.
And the, the reason I'm asking these questions, when I was on the Board of Shelter Network, which is now like moves, I know we had homeless shelters that were in Daly City, San Mateo, a lot in Redwood City, kind of trying to serve the different communities that, that really needed it. And I know now we've expanded to Santa Clara County and have joint efforts, which is amazing because that's what I think Councilmember Jeff G was saying. The more we collaborate as cities and counties, I think that the more we'd be able to get divisions, you know, the zero for our homeless. I have another question. Can you share, maybe this is more for you, Alex, how we are going to get the community involved as we move forward?
So we still do not, if you're talking about the park, Bayfront Park visioning process, we still haven't fully developed our planning process and engagement process, but there'll be more to come. But I think we, we've heard from a couple of community members this evening and then also just hearing from the council as a priority. But we'll make sure to fully engage the community. That, that is our goal here in spring twenty twenty, to invite the whole community in to participate and provide input and feedback of part of regarding that future park planning process.
Good. I think that's really an important point that we need to make sure we share. And my last question, probably the most challenging one, how do we pronounce Bloomquist? Is it Bloomquist or Blumquist, or do we know? I've heard different pronunciations tonight, and as a language teacher, I want to get it right.
Yeah, I've heard, you know, I've been working on this for a couple of years now, Councilmember Gary, and I've heard probably the majority calling it Blum, Blumquist.
Okay, okay, there we go. All right, I just wanted to, there's a follow-up I want to thank definitely our committee that worked so hard on this. I know that it hasn't been easy, and I know it takes a lot of time and perseverance to get to where we are. Alex, Melissa, all of you that have worked so hard on the city staff and Mike and all of your staff, I really want to thank you for getting to this point. I think I'm, I'm really excited about the opportunities. I'm excited about the plans, and I'm excited about involving the community and to really get to, to zero. You know, if any of you drive on eighty to go anywhere, and I do quite often because my son lives in Vacaville, and what you see in, under the freeways and just the challenges that the whole Berkeley and area community, you know, I, I like the way we're moving forward and really being proactive on this. So thank you all for, for the work that you've done.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. I'll have to start saying Blumquist now. Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to follow up on the excellent questions that my colleagues have put forward so far. I just want to kind of begin the conversation and a few questions that I have by saying, this is really fantastic. I think you can see by the various stakeholders that have spoken in, in support of where this project has landed that a lot of work has been done to create compromise and also a project that is going to be value-added to many different constituency groups in the, in the, in the city. So my first question is a little bit of a tactical one. It is about this amendment to the development agreement. It seems to suggest that it is a It seems to suggest that it is a minor amendment with the Carlyle Group. I just want to get a little bit more perspective on what that is and what the implications are if an amendment is not achieved.
So, the amendment to the, or what we would say is the tri-party, I see our attorney, city attorney raising her hands. So, I'll, I'll, I'll let our city attorney have fun.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Kojakian. Uh, Councilmember Smith, thank you for the question. Really, the currently, the development agreement with the developer provides that. The developer has an obligation to develop the full Blumquist extension, as we call it, which is three legs. The city-controlled portion currently, next to the police station. The uh county-controlled portion currently, and then the developer-controlled portion, which abuts the creek. And it provides that so long as the city gains control of the one portion that neither party had, the county portion. They must develop the land. Um, the developer and the county are really interested in phasing. Construction and um using city property in order to have their pieces done. And we realize that. Um, all parties can actually get what they want. Uh, we just want to make sure, since the city, the Blumquist extension is the last in the phasing. That the city's benefit of the bargain under the development agreement is protected. And so when we talk about an amendment, it's really more of a clarification, um, because currently it's a moving target. Uh, we must gain control of the county property by, um, before the developer. Is, uh, seeks their final certificate of occupancy. And so instead of making it a moving target, we just want to make sure that we're protecting the city's interests. And so that's going to be fo- folded into that tri-party agreement. It is going to be a modification maybe or a clarification. I don't know that it's a full amendment.
Got it. Thank you. And so it seems to me that all three stakeholder groups are fairly in alignment that this has to happen. And there's really no, there's really no opportunity that any party could kind of. Reneg for a lo- back, for lack of a better term, on that, on their particular obligation to this amendment. Is that right?
That is correct, and I don't see that we would close on this exchange without having that in place.
Correct. Okay, great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Um, second question, um, and this is about the navigation center. Um, if I'm reading it right from, uh, correctly, from the uh staff report, it's, we, we will be creating two hundred and sixty beds. Um, and that as of the last uh day one count, a homelessness in the county, we have a hundred and eleven people. So, it seems to me that um this one navigation center in theory will kind of solve. The Vision Zero problem. Am I thinking about that right? Um, maybe, uh, Mr. Callagie can speak to that. I'm just kind of wondering.
Through the mayor, uh, Councilmember Smith, thanks for the question. Um, you know, the, the population of, of those experiencing homelessness is. Um, really in flux uh at any given time. And what we're trying to do is create an abundance of, uh, of housing in the county. So that any given time, we can uh remove someone from the street who wants to be housed and provide him with accommodations. This will increase uh our current congregant care uh facility by uh, by about a hundred. Uh, and uh, we've, or, or actually over a hundred, but, but we will have two hundred and forty doors here. Um, individual doors, uh, but could accommodate up to two hundred and seventy uh individuals. And, and, and some of those would be couples that would be sharing um a, a room together. But the vast majority of these will be, eh, will not only be individual rooms, they'll have individual bathrooms and showers and a little. Uh, cooking area, maybe a refrigerator. Some of those details still need to be worked out. But it, 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 it's much more attractive and it's a different way of, of treating those experiencing homelessness. Uh, along with the fact that we'll be bringing in uh wraparound services uh in a very meaningful way. It'll be, you know, we'll be spending about five million dollars a year on, on services to this community once they're there. So, um, it provides us an opportunity to really uh assess uh those entering. Um, uh, make sure that we deal with the issues that they may have and then try to exit them to more permanent housing. Over a, a ninety-day uh to a hundred and eighty-day period.
Got it. Um, appreciate that additional context. And I just have one more question for you, Mr. Callagie. I remember um in one of the last meetings that council had as a full group on this. Uh, discussing this as being kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I'm kind of wondering if um any additional kind of study or thought was put on um that particular line. Because that, you know, struck me very, very poignantly in that last conversation we had. I was wondering if you could add any additional color to that.
Yeah, we, we firmly believe and, and the research we've done, uh, it has really indicated that those who. Um, uh, are, are housed in, in an individual way, uh, are safer. Um, are, are more likely to come into the shelter, uh, are also more likely to receive treatment. And, and then uh exited the shelter in a meaningful, positive way. Um, so we, we firmly believe that this is a, a, a winning concept of individualized rooms with. Intensive wraparound services, even the hotels that we've purchased, we're putting in about two and a half million dollars a year in services. Um, this is going to be, I think, revolutionary in that we hope that it can be replicated, duplicated uh throughout the Bay Area. And throughout the state of California, where we can rapidly house people um in a, a meaningful way. With none of the services, but I think the mayor talked about the chef's kitchen where we can do training and we can do other training onsite there and have. Gathering rooms and computer rooms. And the things that, uh, that a lot of those experiencing homelessness just don't have and need. To be able to, to thrive in a community like this. And not only along with that, but certainly the medical care. Um, in the, the mental health care that's so associated, uh, that's so needed and associated with those experiencing homelessness.
Thank you so much, Mr. Callagie. I, I really appreciate the effort that you just spent in painting a picture for me. And for the community about what um this navigation center will do for our community and our unhoused population. So, I'd like to just say that I'm absolutely in support of um the recommendations that have been put forth by staff and the subcommittee. Want to thank the staff, the county, um, and of course, the members of the subcommittee who've come up with this fantastic proposal. Um, I, when I think about this project, I think about this issue of homelessness. And I think that that pointed comment that was made by Mr. Callagie a few months ago. About this being a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity should not be lost on anyone and certainly is not lost on me. I think that this is an unprecedented opportunity to provide amazing value-added services to. Members of our unhoused population here in San Mateo County, and I could not be in more support of it. Um, as um a member of the council who represents a district that is constantly struggling with homelessness. I know that we need as much support, um, as many resources as we can possibly get. Uh, from as many agencies, um, and governments as we, as, as there is out there. So, I just want to again, thank everyone for their diligence on this. I'm so happy that we got to a point of compromise. Where we're seeing most stakeholders involved in this decision-making being supportive. And uh, again, thank you so much for all the, the hard work.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I uh would like to know if Councilmember Ready or Vice Mayor Hale have any comments they would like to make. At this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, no, I, I, I'm loving the comments of my colleagues. And um, everyone knows how, how I feel. I think, I think people know how I feel about this, um, this project. And so I don't need to um add any, any additional um comments. When the time is appropriate, I would be happy to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Well, I, I will call on you for that then. Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale.
Well, Mayor, I hope you will call on me as the second then. Um, what a, what a, what another privilege to work on. Another project and another subcommittee uh related to homelessness. Um, these are challenging times and these are challenging issues. But I think what we have shown is that by putting our heads together, we are able to come up with really great outcomes. Um, what I particularly enjoyed uh about this process was hearing all of the disparate interests. And finding a path forward together. And so much of that credit goes to staff. I, I will not miss the many, many, many meetings we have had to have on our calendars to get through this process. But it was well worth the effort and I cannot wait for that ribbon cutting. And uh, Mike, I hope that you will have us there uh with you. Because uh, we're, we're very proud of this project and, and looking forward to seeing it uh live.
You are our partner and you will definitely be there.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale, and thank you, Mr. Callagie, too. We look forward to that. Well, I'll just finish by saying, uh, I agree with all of the comments my colleagues have said and, and thank you for expressing it so well. That this has been a bit of a bumpy road. However, I, I would like to thank County Manager Callagie and your team. For uh listening. Uh, I, I know it wasn't an easy message to hear at times, but really listening to our community that. They had strong points of view and wanted to be heard. And so I, I really appreciate that, that you did do that. Because I feel strongly that the outcome tonight is a much better quality solution. With multiple benefits, not just several, but multiple benefits spilling over from the multiple conversations that we have had. So, I really want to thank you for that and for working with our staff. I can't say enough about our staff. You've been wonderful and so helpful. It's been a joy to work with all of you. But I, I, I say all the benefits. I mean, we, we even, I, I'm so pleased that we respected the concerns of our industrial neighbors. The Seaport Industrial Association and the port, who at first were criticized because they really had valid concerns. About noise issues and, and dust and that complaints of having housing right near them. And, and we needed to take that seriously because we value their partnership and their friendship in Redwood City. So, thank you, Mr. Callagie, for understanding those concerns. I think that we did listen and that we did address them. As you could see, they were here this evening to speak in favor of the project, and that wasn't the case the first time. So, I, I'm really pleased that, we haven't pleased everyone, but you never do in a compromise, do you? And so I'm very pleased we've come this far. As far as delays by one speaker who mentioned that we shouldn't. Move forward until we've worked out the wetlands issue. I have no doubt we will work through the wetland issue. But I don't want to do it at the expense of losing funding for valuable transportation, for navigation center, for housing and other things. That do have deadlines to them. And we want to move forward as quickly as possible. So, I do hope that we will act, we will have an aggressive outreach on planning that recreational open space. There's no doubt in my mind. What it looks like, we haven't determined yet, but we're open to ideas and suggestions on that. But I'm real proud of where we are today. Two groups working together, coming up with a good compromise that's for the best for the county. As well as for Redwood City. So, we also be very proud of that. So, I entertain a motion from Councilmember Ready with a second by Vice Mayor Hale. I'd like to ask our city attorney if we could take all of these three items together as one motion.
Yes, you may. Uh, again, I think, uh, Mr. Kujikian during his presentation mentioned revisions to item number three. So, if the motion could clarify that it is the motion as seen on the screen at the moment, and if the second could confirm that.
Councilmember Ready, would you confirm that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, uh, Ms. Ramirez. Yes, I'd like to move that um, that we adopt the first two resolutions. And, and take action on the third. Um, take action as written on the screen.
Second.
And seconded by Vice Mayor Hale. Could we have the roll call, please, Ms. Aguilar?
Mayor Howard, sorry to interject. I, I'm looking at the screen and I do not see the updated text in this screen. It was on the previous, on the slide deck. Um, itself. If you can go to the motions. For clarity's sake, yes. Um, this would have the correct motion.
And Ms. Ramirez, are we okay with that?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Ready, if you could just confirm that for us?
Yes, yes, I do confirm. Um, thank you very much for calling that to our attention.
Second.
Great. Ms. Aguilar?
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Espinosa Garnica is absent.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everyone who is here this evening for this item. Please stay for the next item, because we have a lot of good things to talk about with our library board work plan. And our work plan for the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. So, we'll start with the Library Board Work Plan for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, Library Director Derek Wolfgram will introduce this item. And Library Board Chair Tracy Sugiyama and Vice Chair Hamza Rajaram will give a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Howard. Uh, good evening to you and Vice Mayor Hale and council members. Uh, I'm delighted to have the opportunity for our library board to present this work plan to you this evening. Uh, it's something that I know that they have worked very hard, hard on. And the uh, library board has just been a tremendous support to me during all of the challenges that the library has faced. In the last couple of years, providing advice as we made COVID service changes. Um, providing guidance as we work to update all of our policies to be more equitable. Um, in light of the city's increased focus in that area and all of the uh racial equity reckoning that's been happening. Um, in our community and in our nation. Um, just a lot of great work that's been done. Um, we've had a lot of turnover on the board. We've got some new faces, but everybody has jumped right in and I'm really looking forward to working with them. On some uh community engagement in the next year to kind of see what the next iteration of our library service priorities is going to be. So, uh, grateful to have uh the leadership of Chair Sugiyama and Vice Chair Rajaraman. And I will turn things over to them to share their report with you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, council members, and my fellow Redwood City Public Library Board members. And Library Director Derek Wolfgram, Liz and Serena. I should apologize, I have unstable wifi, so I have my camera turned off just to make sure that I can finish my presentation. My name is Tracy Sugiyama. I'm with the Redwood City Public Library Board, my colleague Hamza Rajmaran. And I will be presenting the Redwood City Public Library Board Work Plan Summary. The format will be, I'll cover the first six slides, which will include board members, our mission and spotlights that we wanted to emphasize. Hamza will continue on the highlights, work in progress on the work plan and followed up with Q and A. As you can see, the Redwood City Public Library Board is made of myself, the current board chair, Hamza Rajmaran, board vice chair. Hinda Chaloo, board secretary, and my fellow board members, Desiree Bartley, Tiffany Chow, Heather Liu, Yin Liu. I also wanted to acknowledge that Janet Lawson, who finished her term July of this year, had served with the Redwood City Public Library Board for seven years. While she is no longer with the Redwood City Public Library Board, you will see her impact on the library's accomplishments. And of course, will continue to have an opportunity to work with her as she's with the Redwood City School District Board. Next slide, please. What is the Redwood City Public Library's Board mission? Um, passionately support the purpose of the Redwood City Public Library as an inclusive literacy hub. For the community through advocacy, collaboration and strategic direction. I believe this picture, which uh Derek had shared with me, captures the essence of what our mission is. The Redwood City Public Library staff showcase their passion and inclusive literacy by reaching out to the community. And this is a great segue to talking about the highlights. Next slide, please. There are numerous Redwood City Public Library's accomplishments, but for the sake of time, we wanted to highlight a few. One of those accomplishments that we are excited to share is the nomination of the Institute of Museum and Library Service National Medal. While we were not selected as one of the three winners this year, but we were humbled to be in the company of the exceptional winning libraries. Being named one of the fifteen libraries in the United States and the only one in California for this prestigious award was an amazing feat. Redwood City Public Library had gathered a lot of stories from our partners in the community. And we wanted to give you a snapshot of some of the creative, meaningful and impactful services. There were many wonderful stories to choose from, but for the sake of time, we only picked two videos. I believe you'll enjoy seeing some of these stories, and if you hadn't had a chance to view them, I would encourage you to watch them. To give you context, the first video is our very own library director. Who provides an outstanding context for the stories followed by our local San Mateo County poet, Lariat. And if you could kindly please play the video. I think when you played the video, I think you needed to share the volume.
Hi, I'm Derek Wolfgram. I'm the Director of the Redwood City Public Library. And when we found out that we were nominated for the National Medal for Library and Museum Services. The first thing that we thought about in terms of what made us successful with that is our partners. We have so many wonderful relationships with community organizations. That help us to reach the community in really special ways, build wonderful relationships with our staff. And allow us to make a real impact in the community. So as we go to share our stories of what makes Redwood City Public Library special. We wanted to let our partners tell the story. So we've recorded, had them record a series of videos for you. That we'll be sharing throughout the day and we really appreciate you giving them a look. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Natalie McClure and I'm a chemist with the American Chemical Society Silicon Valley Local Chapter.
Hello, I'm Aline Casanero. I'm B poet laureate of San Mateo County. I'm so grateful to the Redwood City Public Library for creating and sustaining a strong. Community, especially during the pandemic. Thank you for everything. You do specifically for supporting Project Read's poetry classes for inmates at the Maguire Correctional Facility. And thank you for being part of the planning group for last year's Transgender Day of Remembrance. Thank you especially for your support of poetry and the literary arts. Congratulations for being the only institution in California to be nominated for the 2021 National Medal for Museum and Library Service. We are so proud of you and it is so well deserved.
Thank you. On a final note on this slide, I want to thank our very own Mayor Howard for her participation. I would like to say it looked like you were having fun making this video, so thank you. Next slide, please. One of my favorite item to share, which is the Makerspace. We wanted to highlight the Makerspace because it has been a long time coming. As you know, the city council approves the construction phase at its August 26 meeting as well as the acceptance of $270,000 grant. From the Redwood City Library Foundation, which is headed by Lisa. To help fund Makerspace, we are excited. Construction has started and will likely complete sometime in October. The Makerspace will provide opportunities for people of all ages to create, experiment and collaborate in a self-directed hands-on learning environment. This is designed to provide equitable access for community members to technology and other tools that might not be readily accessible or affordable for individuals. This was a collaboration between different stakeholders and passionate colleagues and friends of the library who made this happen. Specifically, the design and construction of the Makerspace is being jointly funded by City's Capital Improvement Program Funds. And funds raised by the Redwood City Library Foundation through grants from other foundations, gifts from corporations or organizations. And donations from individuals. I should mention that the Redwood City Library Foundation continues to raise funds for technology. Supplies and equipment to the Makerspace, so please feel free to visit rcldfdn.org/makerspace or. Do a Google search of redwoodcitylibraryfoundation.org/makerspace. Next slide, please. I wanted to briefly touch base on the Redwood City Public Library Cares. I wanted to share that the board is aware and we are actively engaged in racial equity work. At the board level and we welcome shared information and increased conversations as well as procedures to grow racial equity at the Redwood City Public Library. One of the priorities under the Redwood City Public Library Cares is to look at our library's policies. There are several policies that we have worked on these last couple of months, but there are still outstanding policies that are on our radar. And that we will continue to work on. But we hope to complete by year end. With that said, I like to pass the baton to my colleague Hamza for her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. When all the doors closed last year due to the pandemic, Redwood City Library opened many virtual doors for our community. The library's focus was to support our community during the difficult times. And they pushed their bar on services to the same heights. The library board is very proud of the library staff who adapted very quickly. We are glad that we could be a sounding and advisory board to Derek and his team. When everything shut down last March, the library started a drive-through checkout. To allow access to the books, they quickly moved the Wi-Fi access points outside for the community. Wi-Fi hotspots were available for checkouts. Longer-term hotspot loans were given to various nonprofit educational programs. School-age children continued enjoying hands-on, project-based educational and recreational activities. Through with drive-through pickups of craft kits, science kits, cooking kits. The demand for these have been unbelievable. Our dedicated library staff transported the in-person storytime into our local parks. The photos after an outdoor storytime at Jardini Dino's Park. The stories from our community was another new program that invited partner agencies to read during these storytimes. Travel Storytime is also at Magic Bridge for people with autism spectrum. The material content was expanded to add many eBooks and online streaming videos too. New enhanced online language learning tools were made available to the users. The popular summer learning challenge continued with staff distributing books to children at food distribution centers, school stores. The valuable Project Read went online and our staff and volunteers continued helping and spreading the joy of learning. The library quickly adopted service changes to align with city initiatives. Staff helped with city rental assistance program, called over 6,000 businesses about financial support programs. And served as cooling relief and smoke relief centers last summer. The focus was also on keeping the community involved in the process by providing various channels for communication and participation. The library is making all efforts to add and improve interactive competence to their services. To allow the social element and the ability for people to connect with each other. This was important during times when many were missing this opportunity to connect with others. Next slide, please. The library board has been active with its advisory services for many events that happened this past year. The transfer of Fair Oaks Library to San Mateo County was a significant one. Many exciting capital improvement projects happened last year or is continuing to happen. The meeting rooms furniture has been updated. The Makerspace, the Interpreter Center and the Pirate Ship at Redwood Shore's library is in progress. And I'm very excited about those. The replacement of our automated materials handling system is coming up soon. Also, the board bylaws were last updated in 2001. The current board brought it up to date. Next slide, please. The board continued with many of our responsibilities by providing guidance on service priorities to enhance transparency and accountability. We sent a letter advocating for state funding for libraries. We advocated for fair eBook pricing and lending models for public libraries. The public is encouraged to enjoy the various wonderful services that the library offers. And we appreciate and welcome volunteers for our programs. Please feel free to connect with me or any of the other library board members if you would like to learn more about these opportunities. The library board also formed few subcommittees to analyze the entry criteria into the board. We want to ensure that the criteria allows for equitable representation. We also advise the library board a director on library budget proposals. Next slide, please. The board is currently focused on a bunch of priorities. We are again very proud that the library. Is the first of the city department to revise its policies to be more equitable. The board has currently reviewed 10 of the 12 policies. To ensure that it's more equitable and inclusive for our community. There is a big community engagement effort coming up in 2022. To just find out the community's aspirations and priorities. This will shape the library's future service priorities. The library board will help the library director on how this process is framed. And to ensure it is an inclusive process that involves all who use the library and those who don't also. We are also looking for opportunities to connect with other BCC members. Next slide, please. The board continues to take responsibility when there are new policy. A popular policy implemented last year got rid of fines for our library users. We will continue seeking various partnerships and fundraising opportunities to serve the community better. If anyone is interested in volunteering opportunities, please do reach out. Finally, we are looking to support the parks and wrecks in the development of the downtown park adjacent to the library. After sharing all the awesomeness, we are ready for Q and A.
That's a wonderful wrap, Ms. Rajaraman. Thank you very much. Oh, thank you, Ms. Sugiyama and Ms. Rajaraman. Thank you very much for your presentation. It was excellent. Are there any clarifying from questions from council before we take public comment? Seeing none, we'll see. I'll turn it over to our city clerk to see if we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak under public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. This is the time for public comment on item 9A, the library board's work plan. If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and keep it raised so that we can see how many speakers we have. I don't see any hands, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. So we will move into a public comment and question, excuse me, comments and questions from the city council. Who would like to begin? That was a wonderful presentation. Vice Mayor Hale?
Wow, well, thank you so much for that presentation. I'm, you know, I consider myself a big fan of the library if. If I could have a button or something to display that, I would wear it proudly all the time. And I think Derek knows that pretty well. I want to ask a quick question about the Makerspace, which is, my understanding is that some of the schools in Redwood City have their own Makerspaces. Are there any plans for these Makerspaces to work together in any way, either programmatically or through. You know, sharing learnings or best practices?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. That's a, that's a great question. We have, we've not gotten to that, that point in the service planning yet, but I think that there are lots of opportunities for. Taking all of the science, technology, engineering, arts and mathematics programs that the library is already offering. And translating them into the Makerspace environment so they can be even more engaging. And I know we have another, a number of other community partners lined up and ready to go. The Library Foundation has put together a Makerspace Advisory Committee with people from a whole bunch of different entities. We've been talking a lot with the Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center about how we can bring them in. I think one of the things that will make the public library space unique is that. It can be truly intergenerational, that we can have opportunities. A lot of the things that happen on school campuses are limited to school-aged students. And here, we can have entire families learning together. We can put on workshops where. Kids can teach older folks about some of the tools and technology that's in there. Some of the Fix-It Clinic type activities that we're planning will have an intergenerational impact. So I think that definitely looking at partnerships with the schools is a great idea. Plus, and many other things that we have on the, on the docket as well.
That is so fantastic. I want to commend you all for a couple of things, if I may, really quickly. One is, and it was covered very briefly, but the sensory storytime. So. For Redwood City to have a sensory storytime is just, it speaks so strongly to the inclusivity. And, you know, acknowledging neurodiversity and having a space, making a safe space for kids who are. On the autism spectrum or, you know, have other sensory needs. It just was really great and I was really pleased to attend a few weeks ago. It was held in Magic Bridge. I mean, there couldn't have been a better space for it. And similarly, how you have taken storytime outside into our parks has really filled a huge missing void for so many of our kids. Who are missing out on that important brain nourishment during the pandemic. So, and it's so appropriate because I know. Chris and the Parks Team are up next, but that collaboration between parks and the libraries has been so essential. And then we always think about the library as a space, but the library is really about people. And I want to share that when we first returned to the library, you know, my daughter is dyslexic. And one of the librarians, Pam, approached her and said, have you found a book yet? And she said, I'm dyslexic. And she said, and I can't read. And she said, you just can't read yet. And she went and helped her find this amazing book that we never would have found, you know, on Amazon anywhere. And that, to me, is the value of librarians. And so we're so grateful for the work that you do for all of Redwood City's kids and adults. And thank you so much to you and to the board for this amazing work. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale, for sharing that story. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor, and I can hardly add to Vice Mayor Hale's report. That was, that was wonderful. I have always been very proud of our library and, and the inclusive, how inclusive it is and has always been. From in, in recent years. And from our library director not being embarrassed about wearing a tutu. Because we're there having fun, right? And when you're having fun, it makes things, our little people feel less self-conscious. The, I wanted to report too that the, the crafts, picking up crafts every, I think it was on Wednesdays. We were picking up crafts at one o'clock. I could not believe, this was from my granddaughter. I, she happened to be visiting, visiting me, we say, on Wednesdays. And we would pick up crafts for her on Wednesdays. I could not believe the long line. Of people that were picking up these amazing crafts. They were really quite inventive and we were having so much fun with them. And so I. I just, thank you. Thank you so much. I'm so proud of our library, of our staff. And how quickly our staff pivoted, as was described, the reading the stories in the park. But also our, our library personnel who were able to do so helped navigate. Those Spanish speakers in our community who wanted to help with applications for rental assistance. I mean, it was incredible that our staff really has been pivoting in so many ways. And has been so inclusive in so many ways. And now we're letting the public know about it. We're letting them know what we're doing to be more inclusive and to be thinking about everyone in our community. Thank you so much. Great presentation, very supportive of your work plan. And so impressed that there is a work plan beyond what you're already doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. I just want to say huge plus one to the comments of Vice Mayor Hale and Councilmember Ready. You know, libraries are just inherently special places and they mean different things to different people. I, you know, remember, and I've said this before on on the dais. The Redwood City Public Library is one of the first places that I navigated to when I moved here about six years ago. And it will always have a special place in my heart. And it's not surprising to me that the library was honored in the way that it was over the past year. And I would just like to say that even though you were not officially awarded the award for, you know, best in library services. In my heart, you have the award. Because you guys just do such fantastic work. I just want to thank you all for being such kind of thought leaders in issues around equity and inclusivity. You know, your human library is something that I've witnessed and it's just fantastic. You know, these types of innovative ideas that are coming from the library are things that I want to see even more of. And so I just encourage everyone a part of the library board to continue to think in innovative and progressive ways. And I guess I'll just say, my final comment is I know that we have moved our North Fair Oaks Library onto the county. And I think that that was an appropriate decision. But I would say, let's not forget about the North Fair Oaks Library. Let's try to think of them as an extended member of our library family. Let's try to bring them into as many opportunities, events, projects as we possibly can, just keep that connectivity because as I'm sure you're, you all know, you know, North Care, North Fair Oaks is really our, is our neighbor. It's our sister city. You know, we have relatives, friends who live and work in in North Fair Oaks. So let's let's try to keep that going as much as possible. So with that said, thanks again for your presentation and look forward to the work ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I just want to respond quickly on the North Fair Oaks, just to reassure you that we have a great working relationship with the San Mateo County Libraries and are in contact with them probably on at least a monthly basis on coordination of activities for the North Fair Oaks area, you know, particularly our Redwood City Schools that are that are located in the North Fair Oaks neighborhood and serve a lot of the Fair Oaks kids. Hoover, Garfield and and Taft. We want to make sure that while there are some things that are, you know, available to them at their closest physical library, which is the North Fair Oaks Library. We also want to make sure they're aware of what's available just up Middlefield at the Downtown Library too. And I think that the County Library Staff and the Redwood City Library Staff have worked together very respectfully to to, you know, decide that it's okay if if that community gets double served in a little bit of a, in in a certain way. Because we're both putting emphasis there that we recognize that that's an area of great need and want to make sure that those kids and those families have every opportunity.
Thank you so much. That's, that's fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfgram for answering that. That's beautiful. I, we are so blessed to have so many branches in our Redwood City area, both incorporated and unincorporated. We're truly blessed. Where I grew up, we had one library and you really need to travel to be there. So we are very fortunate here in our community. Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor. That that reminds me where I grew up in Detroit. The way we had access to a library was a bookmobile. And I can't tell you how amazing it was. It was so cold in the winter, but when you walked into that little bookmobile, you could sit on the floor and it was warm. So my memories go back to libraries for a long time with my kids. And last Friday, I was at our library with my grandson. And a couple of weeks ago, I was at Park with the reading with my other granddaughters. So but definitely am able to benefit from everything you do. And I just wanted to say thank you to the library board. I just love your enthusiasm. I know a lot of you have just started. And it's just great to see what you're doing for our city. And we're so grateful for that. And Derek, being at the top, you know, thank you so much for everything you do for for our children, our families and, you know, our seniors, adults, everyone, because as Michael said, the first place you want to go to when you visit a city is a library.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. And just want to follow up with our library director, our chair and our vice chair and say thank you and to the board. I can assure you right here from our Redwood Shores residents, they love the library. And they're looking forward to even library opening up even more as we work through the health issues and everything that's still in front of us. Chair Sugiyama, two words in your presentation that struck me, stood out for me that in your presentation and board and all the work that you've done. That's passion and impact. And the programs and the services that the library board and library has provided over the last two years lived up to passion and impact. So thank you. Thank you for everybody involved. Keep going. And thank you again. Tremendous.
Thank you, Councilmember G. And I don't think I could add another thing. I so agree with all of the compliments and remarks that have been made. I want to thank you Tracy and Hamza for your presentation. Thank you, Derek, for being the director of the best library, I think, in the world. So I want to thank you all. And the one thing I didn't hear mentioned, but I wanted the community to know, I want to thank you for working with our different groups who support the library. That coordination of effort with Friends of Literacy, the Library Foundation Archives Committee, the Redwood City, Friends of Redwood City Public Library, all different groups with a little bit different mission. However, that your coordination of effort never makes me feel that anyone's out on an island doing something separate and apart from anyone else. You're working together as a team. So thank you very much. And your appreciation, real appreciation for the presentation and your work and the best of luck to you in two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have a motion. Yes. It's a simple motion to approve the proposed library board work plan for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
So move second.
Everybody, okay. I heard Councilmember Aguirre and Councilmember Ready seconded the motion. We'll have the roll call vote, please.
Start with Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Big yes.
Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica is absent.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine B, our Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. Their work plan for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. And our community, our Parks Recreation Community Services Director, Chris Beth, will introduce the item and Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission Chair Pablo Lopez and Vice Chair Paul Demers Demers will give a presentation. Mister, should we start with Chris Beth, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Howard. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale, city council members. Again, Chris Beth, the director of the Parks Recreation and Community Services Department. It's really a pleasure to be here to present. I'll introduce you to our commission chair and vice chair in just a moment, but also a pleasure. I want to just echo the words by council, just the acknowledgement of our great partners in our library with our library director and the board. And we've done a lot. Have you seen, as Mayor Hale mentioned, or Vice Mayor Hale mentioned, you know, the story times in the park that we are doing, the sensory story time at Magical Bridge. And it's just been another exciting layer of partnership. And there's a number of department heads here that that's just a great culture of Redwood City. And, you know, there's no fiefdoms here. We do work together so well. And I want to thank your leadership and direction for the city and of course, our city manager and city managers. Assistant city managers for for doing that and creating that culture. So thank you. This evening, we're going to be again handing this over to our our chair and vice chair for our commission to talk about the work plan for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three. I do want to acknowledge that we also have a lot of commissioners here this evening in support. Again, that's just the great nature of this commission and supportive for each other and for me. They've been an excellent sounding board this past year and a half plus now regarding our COVID response for the community. As you recall, that we had to shut down park amenities when we first didn't know too much about COVID and and how to respond and how COVID was transmitted to others. And so there was a real fear there and just the acknowledgement of what we had to do to react quickly. And then later, as we started opening up safely, all of our parks to parks being the center in the area where people needed to go to exercise, to have mental and physical and spiritual health to get away from being indoors. That became the respite, you know, in this community and communities around us. So I just want to thank the commission again for working with me and and figuring this out together. So with that, I'd like to pass it on to Chair Lopez and Vice Chair Demers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chris. And on behalf of the commission, we would all like to thank you for your leadership and one of the toughest years that we've had on the commission and as well as the city. Good evening, Mayor Howard, Vice Mayor Hale and the rest of the council. My name is Pablo Lopez and I am the chair of the Parks Recreation and Community Service Commission. First of all, I would like to apologize for my voice this evening. I lost it somewhere in between last night and this evening. So I'll do my best to keep it up for the presentation. But as Chris mentioned, we have a lot of wonderful members from our commission here tonight. And I will be presenting our work plan with our vice chair, Paul Demers. This first slide, what we wanted to do here is not only introduce you to our commission, but also show you the wonderful and beautiful faces of our commission that's always smiling and always ready to create action whenever possible. So I would love to thank them for all of their hard work in building this work plan and for the rest of the work that they've done on the commission so far. Okay, the purpose of the Parks Recreation Community Service Commission. First and foremost, our purpose is to create smiles. That's what we do as the Parks Recreation Community Service Commission. We look for ways to create smiles within our community. Of course, we also act in advisory capacity to the city council and and the city manager, whether that be instituting an adequate adequate system of parks, playgrounds, bathing facilities and other recreation establishments, repairing and maintaining any of the facilities that we have around the city. The acquisition of real estate and personal property, property related to parks, recreation and playgrounds and recreational activities, programs for the citizens of Redwood City. But again, you know, the thing that we like to see the most and especially with this commission is when we hear members from the community talk about how, you know, a moment in one of our parks or going out into our parks and walking around and seeing just all the wonderful smiles. Doesn't matter if they're behind a mask right now. It's nice to see people out and about and and seeing the activities again happening all over the park. I myself grew up, born and raised in Redwood City. And knowing that we still have children learning to play soccer and learning to play other sports and ride bikes in the same parks that I did is 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 so special to me. And you know, really, I think that this commission is so purpose and mission driven that it's it's a real joy to work with. Next slide, please. So our mission statement for the PRCS Commission is through community outreach and engagement. The PRCS Commission advocates, advises and recommends policies and programs to the city council that enrich the lives of those that live, work and play in Redwood City. The key word here is enrich. It's all about enrichment with our commission. We're always looking for ways to enrich the lives, build equity amongst the communities that we have here. And again, I can't thank the Chris Beth and and the rest of the parks crew to be be able to handle and pivot in such a major way last year with the pandemic and being able to provide and just an assortment of different activities and and still be able to host events, which was just a major win for that department and and just continuing to find ways to to enrich the lives of all of our communities in Redwood City. Next slide, please. So these are some of the highlights and the compliment accomplishments that we've had since we created the work plan a few years ago. And, you know, all of the commission's previous priorities are still in progress. The first one is increased park funding. As you all know, you know, we can never have enough funding for parks. We want to make sure that we're looking for ways to either sponsor or or bring in different funds in a variety of different ways. We've completed the Park Impact Fee Nexus Study, which we will update you all on the council. I believe within the next few months, we're working on the on updating the residential development fee to align to the current market rates and propose new non-residential fee studies for park funds. We're also working on creating business partnerships to fund parks and programs, which we'll go over once we talk about the the upcoming priorities. The second one here is increasing community engagement activities. Like I said, it was a a hard year in trying to figure out how to continue to engage the community while while we were on lockdown. And we did that in a few different ways. We engaged our neighborhood associations and our youth teen advisory board. We tried the best we could to host neighborhood events at local parks. Previous to the pandemic, we were, we created a Park Champions Program, which was piloted at Stall Staff Park. And hopefully, we will be able to continue that program in in other parks as well. And then we're still continuing to work with local businesses to host events and trainings either within our parks or our community centers. The the third one here is focusing on park safety. Yeah, I know one of the councils strategic priorities is in transportation. And we constantly talk about transportation and making sure that a lot of our parks are accessible. If it's, you know, sidewalks that need to be repaired, if it's bike lanes that that should, that we recommend. We wanted to make sure that we're looking at all aspects of transportation and safety into our parks and making sure that everyone is able to get to our park, our parks safely and have a safe time at the park. We've enhanced the Ranger Program within some of our parks. We're working with neighborhood of volunteers as well. Some of that goes into our Park Champions Program that we that that I mentioned earlier. And, you know, hopefully, we're able to engage more of our community, build stronger relationships within members of our community to build similar programs for other parks in Redwood City as well. And then the fourth one here was one of our accomplishments is is developing a park amenity improvement plan. And with this, we're really looking at ways we can improve some of the amenities that already exist in some more parks or figuring out ways to grow the amenities and parks. Of course, our most popular park right now is Magical Bridge. And, you know, even with that, we're still always constantly looking at ways to improve that area, whether it be through the sunshades, which were a planned project, or, you know, when we first opened the park, having staff there to facilitate the the crowd and making sure that everyone was moving in and out in a safe fashion and just continuing to really develop the amenities that we have within our parks as well. Next slide, please. Yes, the fun part here. We love pictures at the Parks Rec and Community Service Commission, and we want to share that with you all. The pictures you're seeing here are some of our modified outdoor recreation classes and programs. Our indoor recreation classes with masked participants, per our CDC guidance, of course. We had some of our youth participation in art programs. Our drive-in holiday events, where, as you can see, Frosty really kept in shape during the pandemic. Our take-home recreation activity boxes facilitated again by our wonderful park staff. And then the outdoor camps at Stall Staff Park. and then the outdoor camps at Stall Staff Park. Next slide, please. And these are more pictures of the Magical Bridge Playground, which I'm hoping and I'm sure all of you have visited plenty of times. I think it's such a wonderful park and I'm so happy that we were able to build, you know, this amazingly accessible park within our city. You can see where the playground slide mound is, the new shaded structures that I mentioned earlier, the playhouse, which, you know, hopefully I would love to see in the future, once things get better, you know, have some plays. And I know my children like going in there and really just making their own plays and, you know, their imagination and being able to play with the kids that go there as well is fascinating. You can see a wide view of the playgrounds, some more of our shaded structures and just some of the amenities that we have at Magical Bridge. Next slide, please. Thank you. These were amazing events that we were still able to have last year, this year as well. One of these you can see is the poster for the Ticket Theater and Drive-In Shows, our Drive-In Zope Circus, Cars at Drive-In Site, our Senior Drive-In Lunch Movie Program. We had one of these shows, our poster for the Free Motor Movies that the Parks Department was offering and just a variety of our different shows. You know, again, shout out to just the Parks Department for being able to think on their feet and think creatively and still be able to offer these amazing events during such a tough time. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so here you can see regardless of a pandemic or not, our park staff continuing essential duties through the pandemic. Signage and cleaning of park play structures. Again, we wanted to make sure that people visiting our parks are doing it in the safest way possible. Additional hand washing stations were put out, added to different park sites. I would go around a lot of the parks during the week and see that people were using these amenities and we're very grateful for them. Portage Johns and hand washing facilities were added to various sites in the city. And just a delivery of, you can see one of our trucks there, just delivering additional facilities as needed. So really, it took a lot for our park staff and our team to come together and think about different ways of providing safe, fun and effective activities. And this just shows the the level that we went to to make sure that can happen. Next slide, please. Great. These pictures are showing some of our drive-through blood pressure screenings for seniors. You can see that on the bottom left-hand side, I believe, this senior meal pickup at the Veteran Center. The senior staff preparing holiday meals for delivery and pickup, distance learning facilities set up at community centers. Again, I can't thank them enough for that. That was huge for some of our under-resourced facilities and families or communities and families within Redwood City and being able to provide this for children and to continue their education and not have a huge lapse in their learning was just so, so huge. And the communities were very grateful for that as well. And then you can also see our vaccination fair that was hosted. Where is it? I think it's in that bottom, I want to say maybe that bottom right-hand corner. But again, just different amenities that we were able to provide the community during a tough time. Next slide, please. And here, one of our very exciting projects is the Vet Center. So you can see the current construction at our Vet Center. You know, we're very, very excited about that. You can see the mock-up there as well. We have the new downtown parks project related to the Bayfront Park. So you can see sort of what's going on in that waterway there. And then some of our ADA improvements across various parks. So we were again, always constantly looking at different ways to improve those amenities and make sure that all of our parks are accessible. And then resurfacing of tennis courts. Something that simple can go a really long way in improving the facilities that are readily available to our community. Okay, and then moving on to our priority projects for our new fiscal year twenty two, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. As I mentioned before, it's increased park funding and increase our partnerships. We want to make sure that we are thinking of a variety of different ways of being able to not only provide new and updated amenities, we want to make sure that we're creating the necessary funds in order to be able to provide just a really high-end and equitable park and resources program. Our second priority here is increasing our community engagement activities. That is, I think it starts honestly with just talking to the community, making sure that we hear what's going on at each of our communities. So one of the things that we've done as a commission is to split up and reach out to the different neighborhood associations and talk to them, hear out what they have to say about their community, their local park and seeing where we can help. I talked about this a lot already, but maintaining safe parks is extremely important to us. We want to make sure that our parks are safe now more than ever, and not only because COVID-19, but also, you know, just the kids that play at the park. Scrapes and bumps are going to happen, but we got to make sure that we prevent as many of those unnecessary injuries as possible. And also maintaining a safe environment overall. And then implementing a park amenity improvement plan. Our Vice Chair Paul Demers will go into more into detail with that priority. But what we're trying to do is really constantly think of innovative ways to improve our park amenities. And so we do want to go into these in a little bit more detail. So in terms of the increased park funding and partnerships, we are asking to adopt and increase a park impact fee. And we're also looking towards, you know, updating our current impact fees and and being able to get those approved so we can start to model what it's going to look like in the future when our city's growing and we're going to need more green space in Redwood City. The second one here is, this is an idea that we've talked about a lot, is creating a corporate and business opportunity program. And what our mindset is there and what our thinking is there is we want to be able to partner with local organizations, small businesses, large businesses to create sort of a volunteer opportunity that they can sponsor. So for example, a company can come in and pay a sponsorship fee and they will help us plant trees or have a park cleanup day or a mulching event, anything that we would need help with in the parks, that can also create a sense of community amongst their organization or their employees. And we would also get a sponsorship fee for that to be able to help that out. I know a lot of those types of programs are very popular and active amongst different businesses and corporations in the Bay Area and I'm hoping that our city can adopt those as well. I think the biggest, sorry, go back really quick. I think the biggest benefit here is just the increase in equity in the parks program and being able to offer the same amenities, the same experience that we have at one of our premier parks like Magical Bridge. We can, while we can't offer the exact same experience in another park, we can still provide a level of amenities in all of our different communities in Redwood City. Next slide, please. This one, something that I've been a big advocate for and I'm very excited about is we need to start really engaging with our communities again. You know, we've been, of course, safely in lockdown and I think the communities are ready to really start engaging and being able to share ideas and support our neighborhoods, support our communities and being able to engage and find out what we can do for each of our communities. Like I mentioned before, we split up the different neighborhood associations amongst the commissioners and we've all tried to reach out and we all want to continue to listen to see what else we can do. And, you know, some ideas might not get through and some will, but we're here to make sure that we're listening to our residents and making sure that we continue that partnership. I mentioned the Parks Champion Program. The Parks Champion Program was a program that started at Stall Staff Park where members of that community created the Park Champions Program to be able to go into Stall Staff and build activities, clean the park and really take ownership of that area. And the, you know, the residents that are a part of this program have just been absolutely wonderful in making sure that not only the park is clean, but they're speaking up against, you know, any improvements that we can make at Stall Staff. Also taking it upon themselves to make sure that that space is safe. And we hope that we can garner enough attention to some of our other parks to be able to spread that program as well. We're looking to develop a volunteer program with local schools to help with parks and event cleanup, serving the community and just partnering and being better neighbors to ensure that our parks are always fun to go to, always a blast. And as I mentioned before, our purpose is smiles, like let's keep continuing to build those experiences and engage with our communities as much as possible. I think a better engaged community also increases that sense of place and and just development for more park advocates. Yeah, I joined this commission to be able to speak my mind, to be able to bring some historical context to the proud sense of ownership that I do have for Redwood City Parks. And, you know, I think that we can also increase that amongst newer and older residents and being able to build out, you know, just the best experience possible. Mayor Howard, I know you said we had the best libraries in the world, but I also believe we can have the best parks in the world as well. And moving on to this number three, I do want to hand it off to our Vice Chair Paul Demers.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Paul Demers. I'm the Vice Chairperson of the Parks Recreation and Community Service. I hope everyone can hear me. So the next, the next item on our, on our work plan, as Pablo mentioned, is maintaining safe parks. This is something that's continuing. It's always part of our, of our, of our work. The first, there are two places where where the commission is working on the safe parks. And the first is in the Park Ranger program. The Park Ranger is something that started as a pilot a few years ago. It turned out great. We have continued it and we are working to expand it into other parks. It started at Stall Staff Park. When what we're, in our work plan is to find the best use of the park rangers that we have and where they would make the most, the most sense for them to be and for what, for that to do. The park rangers are, work for a contracting company. They're specially trained in in being park rangers at city parks. They also go to some of our neighboring cities who hire them. And the second thing that the commission is involved in is the updating the signage. And we have redesigned the signs in many parks, including in Stall Staff, you might have seen it. Some of the signs that we had went back to the 1960s and they conflicted with each other and were hard to see. Just a couple of things here about why a moose, why do we have a picture of a moose? And that's because a moose's antlers are six feet across. So if you're being socially distant, you will be the same distance of a moose's antlers. And across the bottom there are some pictures of work that's been done to clear evasive plants out of parks. This is, it does a couple of things. First, it brings it to a more natural back to what it originally is supposed to look like. It also helps with fire, especially getting, having firefighters be able to get in and out if there is a fire. Next slide, please. The last item on our work plan is to continue on the implementing what we learned in the Parks Needs Assessment to upgrade amenities. And there's kind of two parts to the Parks Needs Assessment. The first is to use the space that we have better. Make sure that every square foot we have is being used to the best use of the community surrounding it. And this helps with, with transportation because people don't have to move, don't have to move so far to go to the amenities that they want. And there's different kinds of amenities for different types of people. There's for little, very small children, like tot lots to playgrounds, which you normally think of as a park. But then even for bigger kids, and we've talked a lot about play equipment for bigger kids, because sometimes big kids still want to play on the equipment, but it really isn't realized and built for them. And then adults. And there's pickleball is a very popular thing and we looked at, we're looking at how to increase access to pickleball. Another thing is Wi-Fi. And we brought this up a couple of years ago. And it's kind of like, eh, it would be nice to have Wi-Fi, but it is the number one asked-for amenity in our parks. It's, it's just like everybody wants it. And some of it is because not everybody has high-speed internet at home. And even if they do have some kind of internet, it might not be fast enough for multiple people to be on it at the same time. You know, we saw this during the pandemic when, when children were at home on Zoom, trying to all be on the same, not that fast internet at the same time. It got a little slow. And the last thing is to continue adding art to parks. We, Chris Beth is also responsible for art in, art installations in the city and he brings lots of great ideas about art in parks and temporary art, permanent art, all kinds of things. And that's the art just makes it, makes it feel better when you're, when you're in the, in the, in the park. And we have one more slide. Yeah, so this, this is an excerpt from the Parks Needs Assessment. And what it shows is that the pink areas, the brightest areas, are areas that are within the city limits, but not within a walking distance of a city park. And lots of things count as parks that might not be city parks. But this is, this is one particular slide. And this is sort of the base that we use to, for the amenities and figuring out what amenities go where. We have many other, that we don't have them here, but in our document, we have many, many other maps showing again, walk, walking distance with small children, walking distance, including the fact that you can't cross some streets. We have every kind of amenity you can think of and where they are and and where, where we think they might be more about, better placed. So that is the end of our presentation. The next slide, questions and answers. And Pablo and I and Chris are all happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very, very much, Pablo. Paul, thank you. And I see many members of your commission are also in attendance and I want to thank them for being here. What a lovely presentation and you have your work cut out for you, absolutely no doubt in my mind. At this time, are there any clarifying questions from council before we go to public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to ask our city clerk if she would initiate public comment on this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Now is the time for public comment on item nine B, the Parks Recreation Community Service Work Plan. If you'd like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and keep your hand raised so we can see how many speakers we have. It looks like we have one speaker and you will have two minutes. It will, the, our speaker is call in user one. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you. Hi, my name is Marcelina Luna. And thank you for the presentation. And this is something that I've been doing a lot of research for our parks. And there was a lot of talk from the president of the commission about equity. And I was wondering if he could elaborate more into what that really means? Because we hear a lot about equity in a lot of presentations, but there's no specific examples of what that looks like. It's very general and generic, in my opinion. Now, I've made a point to visit all of our Redwood City Parks with my grandson. And I have to say, the disparities from, let's say, west side of El Camino to the east side are very different. And I also noticed some of the parks in the west side, some don't even have restrooms, which lets me to believe that they're really intended for the neighbors that live in that area. When I took my grandson, we had to leave because he needed to use the bathroom and there was no bathroom, specifically the one across from Sequoia Hospital, which I do not even know some of these parks existed. So is there a plan to increase our parks? Let's say in the east side of El Camino? I believe we have maybe a total of thirteen acres on that side versus over ninety acres on the west side. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luna, very much. And that is the end of our public comment, Mayor Howard.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. A question's been raised. I was going to ask our Director Chris Beth if he would like to answer that question.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know if it's Jessica or Pam. If you could advance the slide, if you can go back to the slide deck. Ms. Luna brings up a very good point. And this is why we're looking at our equity within our park systems and looking at the, you know, the needs assessment and where we have amenities dispersed throughout the city. If you go very to the last one, we're going to show you, this is also in our park needs assessment. This is from 2019, one more. So if you look at this, you look at city-owned parcels. And this is in the different areas of the city. This was in the planning document. You can relate it to the different neighborhoods, but in general, these are sections of the city. And then also because of our unique relationship with the school district, it's not in every city, we have a joint use agreement. So we do count towards use of athletic fields and playgrounds for after school and weekends for schools. But in essence, you can see both as it correlates. You can see that there's definitely a disparity in downtown. And looking through even different parts, certainly south Redwood City, you know, east Redwood City, you you see where we're at. And in fact, we have a standard of three acres per thousand in Redwood City. And all told, we're about 2.6 acres per thousand. So part of the strategy is, you heard a lot about funding this this evening, and we're going to be bringing our park impact fees to you. That's one way, long term, where we look at using park impact fees to address amenities and where we would place those amenities and spread that out throughout the city. We're also working with developers. A recent developer, I was looking at improvements and benefit for contributing to parks and specifically over at Mezzi's Park. And what we can do in that neighborhood is they're developing, you know, this, we're looking at opportunities, working with developers to upgrade our park system. A recent developer also is putting rooftop parks as well. And you probably saw the footsaw presentation of one of the gatekeeper processes. So again, very unique if we look at publicly accessible privately owned spaces in neighborhoods because we're also landlocked, that's the other issue. There's acreage issues and we love to explore about how do we provide more park acreage? But how we're doing it, for instance, as an example, in downtown Redwood City, we're using city-owned land and converting parking lots into into park. And City Council had that vision again of our downtown park system. And you'll see right here that it's also in need of more service. That Library Lot A, as our library commission mentioned, we're going to be addressing that as well in the conversion of the park this coming year. Certainly the Bayfront Park, that's a new opportunity. Other opportunities with the planning that were coordination with the Port of Redwood City, east of 101, where we can go ahead and work with the port as they're reimagining that area for spaces. Safe mobility, that's what we looked at in transportation. And now for the department, we're going to be responsible for the safe routes to school, the slow transition, working with the other departments in the school district and also parklets. So these are a number of strategies I'm throwing out to you. But in answer to the question, is exactly why we're looking at our five-year capital improvement project plan to address those improvements. And what we see is some parks not having the amenities that they need. So that's how we're going to do it.
Thank you very much, Chris. I appreciate that explanation. So I'd like to open it up now to council discussion. And who would like to begin? Let's see, turn this, council member ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard, and thank you, Mr. Beth, for that excellent response. I was actually going to report that just this last weekend, I had someone who lives downtown, a new resident downtown, ask me why there weren't more parks downtown. So I appreciate that you came fully equipped to respond to that question so that now I am more fully equipped to respond when asked. So I I really appreciate that. In the last year and a half, two years, I have become much more intimately aware of the Parks, our Parks Program. And I can't tell you how proud I am. I think that the the point was made that that we may have the world's best library, but we also have the world's best parks. I think that's probably true. The, so our Parks Department, I guess I wasn't thinking about it at the time, is in in charge of the senior, senior programs, the the art that's all over the city. It's in charge of everything that, you know, we see in our, in our, in our city. So this last year, when I was involved with the Senior Lunch Program, two of the library staff were helping deliver meals. And they were both two of the most caring people that that residents were really depending on and that staff was depending on to keep our residents, our our vulnerable seniors safe. So I was just super impressed with that. Super impressed with this, with this program, with with the presentation and with the work plan going forward. I don't know how you do it all, it's just incredible. We just had the Oktoberfest this last weekend. It was reported to to me that someone was there from Japan and complete, and came specifically to the Oktoberfest from Japan. So it's just incredible what we do in Redwood City. And and you're looking, you're making a list to do more. I'm just very, very impressed. Thank you so much to the commission, to and to Mr. Beth and your staff. You're all just wonderful and I'm very proud of the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, council member ready. Vice Mayor Hale.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council member ready. I will continue with layering on the praise for this fine department leader and Chris, and then this commission. And it was wonderful to hear in such depth from our commissioners. You know, there's this sort of, we just experienced the magic of the parks. And that presentation really showed all of us the sausage making that occurs to make them such extraordinary experiences. We've already talked about some of the collaborative programs with the library, which I think are phenomenal. I also want to mention that you've really provided a bridge for so many of our youth with after school activities. A lot of the activities kids normally participate in are indoors. And a lot of those business owners have turned to you, to the parks, to say, is there a space you can provide us with so that kids can continue to, you know, learn karate, do gymnastics? And adults too, I've seen many adult classes happening in the parks as well. And it it's amazing, it's as if you've, you've blocked, you have booked out almost every, you know, square inch at every hour of the day in in so many of our parks. So and and what's really important about that too is that you're helping these small businesses stay afloat during this time. So I see it, I acknowledge it, it's really impressive, everything that your team does. And and our events are really what have brought so much of the joy back to the city this summer as we're coming through this difficult time. So thank you for all that you do. I'm really excited about the work plan and about there being more parks too. I really love this collaboration of public and private. I think it's a really excellent path forward for diversifying our parks portfolio. And I'm excited to see what's to come with this work plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Councilmember G.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. Continuing the theme of thank you, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chair Lopez, Vice Chair Demers. The last year and a half has been extraordinary where everyone's had to learn to pivot and change and be more creative. And you've done it. The proof is in the slides that were presented this evening. And not only have smiles been put on people's faces, we've had to learn how to smile with our eyes. And so thank you very much for teaching us all how to smile with our eyes also. I'm going to be very interested in the needs assessment and the capital needs that go with it. We will continue to add parks and then continue to maintain our parks and improve our parks. There's a lot coming. There's the downtown connection to the Bayfront. We just approved the land swap with the county and hopefully we'll go forward. We'll create the opportunity for another park. So there is a lot of work in front of us, but thank you very much for all the hard work. But Chris, there's one thing I think is missing from the work plan. I I didn't see them mention about bringing the Mr. Redwood City Competition back. I think our library director might be interested in competing. But just food for thought for both commissions about maybe bringing Mr. Redwood City Competition back.
Okay, challenge is out.
Thank you. I always enjoyed Mr. Redwood City. I hope they do bring it back someday. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate the opportunity. Again, just want to say fantastic work to the Parks and Rec Commission. I will say that the Parks and Rec Commission definitely takes on audacious goals. You know, the new Veteran Memorial Senior Center is just an example of that. I am beyond thrilled to be able to have participated in the groundbreaking as well as a consideration as a planning commissioner. And it just really continues to illuminate itself with this great work plan that you have in front of us. I would just say that, kind of echoing some of the comments of our public, definitely want to make sure that we're keeping issues of equity at the forefront. Specifically interested in equity as it comes to the provision of sports fields, specifically soccer fields that I know have created some consternation among some of our communities of color in Redwood City. So I think that that could be an interesting thing to add to the work plan, just kind of thinking about what the implications of certain decisions that we have on, you know, subject matter that are seemingly innocuous but have sometimes unintended consequences. So with that said, again, just really want to say thank you for all the incredible work and look forward to seeing more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Aguirre.
Just want to echo everything my colleagues have said. The parks, parks are amazing. What a coup that we have something like Magical Bridge in Redwood City, you know, for serving so many different families and children. And I love the upgrades for it. And really looking forward to the senior center to serve that other whole piece that we know in our community that is really needed. And we're not getting younger, so we're all going to benefit from that one for sure. I'm looking forward to that too. But, you know, I also do want to echo with my colleague, Michael Smith said, you know, I've always wanted, Chris, you know, I've always wanted to turn some of those buildings, buildings into our central park downtown and make things closer. So I know it's a challenge because land is not there. And and how do we, how do we do something to make sure that everybody has access to our parks? Because it is such a, it's it's so important. And it's been so important during this pandemic for families. And I love the idea of Wi-Fi because I know that there are folks that can't have access to that. And that might be a great amenity to have as well. So thank you for all the work of the commission. You are amazing. We appreciate all the work that you do. And of course, to all the staff from Parks and Recs. And and the way that you balance the needs between you and the library and partner, I think is a, you know, testament to just how our our city works when we work together. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Well, I, again, I can't agree more with the comments and compliments of my colleagues. Director Beth, you you have a wonderful commission in your hands right now. And and they are keeping up with you. So it makes you probably work harder. But I I love the work plan. I I love the the vision. I I really am appreciative that you're going to be integral as we have these robust conversations with the community, planning that Inner Harbor area out that we discussed tonight. What an exciting opportunity. And I know your commissioners will take it on 100%. And I really appreciate that. I was going, I'm glad you're analyzing fees that help support those wonderful visions that you have. I think it's time and I think timely. So I hope that comes to us sooner rather than later for that. As a former park commissioner, I couldn't agree more that this group is a fun group. What you do is amazing. But when I was a park commissioner, we were assigned a park or two. And and we went around to those parks. I like your vision better. I I like your approach better, that you're going to be working with neighborhoods that each commissioner will have a neighborhood with maybe several parks attached to it. And you'll overlap on that way. But you you're getting to meet the people who use those parks instead of just visiting the park and hoping people come there to visit you because we didn't have real strong, robust neighborhood associations in those days. So I think this is a really interesting approach you're taking. And I think it'll have a lot of value in gathering input on what's needed as far as amenities, as you mentioned, for the different parks. So I congratulate you for thinking outside the box on that one. So and I'm a big fan of your idea about a possible park champion or park ranger because we do need more oversight in our parks. We know that, especially after hours. And we can't ask our police department to be everywhere all the time. But I think we're going to have to, as we put more amenities in, we have to be careful that we protect and and preserve the value of our parks and amenities. So I think that's going to be possibly needed in our future to help cover the facilities, especially after hours. Thank you again, commissioners, for your ambitious work plan. I look forward to hearing more about it in in the coming months ahead. And Director Beth, as always, thank you. It's a pleasure working with you. So you're very welcome. So I know we have a council action. Would someone like to make a motion on Parks Recreation Community Services Work Plan for fiscal year 2021, 22, and 22, 23?
Moved by Hale.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Hale. And I see a hand, Councilmember Aguirre, would you like to second it?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Have a roll call, please.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Aguirre.
Yes.
Councilmember G.
Yes.
Councilmember Ready.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Yes.
And Mayor Howard.
Yes.
The motion passes with six votes. Councilmember Espinoza Garnica is absent.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Now, moving on to item number 10. These are city council member reports from regional meetings and conferences attended. We're going to start with Councilmember G, who will give an update. Cal City's Annual Conference, Caltrain, SAM Trans, Trans Bay Joint Powers Authority. Councilmember G, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Howard, for the opportunity to brief my colleagues here on the council, as well as Thank you, Mayor Howard, for the opportunity to brief the c- my colleagues here on the council, as well as our our members of our city on some of the things that are going on. And I like to do this in two parts. First, Cal Cities Annual Meeting and Conference that was held last week. And also invite Councilmember Aguirre who, to comment on that, as she was one of the attendees. Then I'll tackle the, some of the transportation things going on in the region. Him, next slide, please. Um, last week, um, Cal Cities, or the League of California Cities, rebranded itself to Cal Cities, and last week was the annual conference and expo in Sacramento. But Councilmembers Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, myself attended. And the vision is really um to represent the cities and to be a a advocate for what is local control. Um, and to be a voice in Sacramento for cities. Next, please. That brings together elected officials from throughout California, city attorneys, city managers, department heads. And the meeting is all about three days of presentations, advocacy, networking, sharing, learning, um, as well as the divisions get together to have their business meetings. Um, we learn about bills that are in Sacramento. For example, part of the two work plans we heard tonight were about broadband and digital divide and and improving uh connectivity. And we learned from presentations that there are two bills sitting on the governor's desk. SB four and AB fourteen are waiting governor approval, which will provide funding for broadband and connectivity across the state. Funding will be made available for ten years and available through the CPUC. So, all that is waiting for the governor's signature to move forward, and that will provide that connectivity that we learned is so missing uh through the COVID pandemic the last year and a half. Next, please. We also heard from two keynote speakers, Bonnie St. John and Michael Montan- Richard Montañez. Uh, and they had some great comments about leadership and leading through um change that we've gone through. So, it was a great opportunity to learn about their perspective on leadership. Next, please. Also, there are five diversity caucuses in Cal Cities. The Women's Caucus, Latino Caucus, African American Caucus, API Caucus, and the LBGQ LGBTQ Caucus. And all five caucuses had business meetings, uh to elect new officers. Councilmember Aguirre is past president of the Latino Caucus, and myself was honored to be past president of the API Caucus. Next, please. At the general membership meeting, there were bylaw amendments and two resolutions. And bylaw amendments were huge in the sense that the diversity caucuses that I just mentioned have been asking for a seat on the Cal Cities Board. And through this issue of pandemic and diversity, um, the leadership of the Cal Cities Board put on the, to the membership, a ball like bylaws amendment that allowed each diversity caucus to have a seat on the Cal Cities Board. That bylaw amendment passed, requires two-thirds of the members to pass it. It did at the general membership meeting. Very pleased to see that. Because it was a huge journey, many years to be able to add that diversity to the Cal Cities Board. There were two other resolutions before the general membership. One was about online sales tax equity. That was referred back to committee. The second resolution about securing railroad property maintenance. This is to get railways to clean up um the debris along their railway um passed very successfully. The Cal Cities Conference alternates north and south every other year. So, next year in twenty twenty-two, the meeting will be in Long Beach. And it's just a great opportunity to learn from others uh and to just network and to get updated on legislation in Sacramento. Councilmember Aguirre, would you like to add your perceptions and reflections on last week's meeting?
Thank you, Councilmember G. I think this is one of the most important conferences that we have as elected officials, and I'm very proud that there were three of us there. I know there were a couple cities in in Sematyo County that really made an effort to have all of their members there. And um, we also have, you know, the, I'm past chair of the Peninsula Division, which really crosses borders. That's the only one that good, has uh colleagues from Sematyo and Santa Clara County. And so, when we're able to get together, we're able to address a lot of the issues, learn from each other, bring back best practices and share those. And that was um Friday morning at seven, and we had a Peninsula Division um meeting. And just to see everybody show up at that time and to really embrace and be able to talk about what people are doing in their cities and move forward. To me, it always brings, uh helps me bring back ideas and to be able to share and also realize how proud I am of where we are in Redwood City. As you mentioned, the vote on a Friday afternoon was huge. The caucuses have been working on this forever to have some equity in the board representations. There were many amazing workshops that, you know, are helpful, both for city managers, city attorneys, you know, other folks as well as elected officials. So, it's good to see what they're doing statewide. And I think that's where the learning comes in, and that's what, why I think it's important that we attend those and bring that back to the city of Redwood City. So, thank you, Councilmember G.
Thank you, Councilmember Gary. I think um Pacifica and Hillsborough were well represented by their councils at the League of Cities amongst um several other Sematyo County cities. So, mark your calendars, probably September of of twenty twenty-two in Long Beach. Encourage everybody to, if they can, if their schedule permits. Um, we'll go on to the regional appointments. So, I am honored to serve on several regional transportation agencies. Um, and Director of SAM Trans, um the General Powers Board, which oversees Caltrain and the Trans Bay Joint Powers Authority. What's listed are a couple of the committees that come with um those appointments. Next, please. On SAM Trans, one of the major efforts is the Reimagine SAM Trans Initiative. It's a comprehensive um analysis to take a look at how we allocate and how we um deal with our resources throughout Sematip County with regard to mobility. The goals are to improve the experience for uh our customers, um to grow new riders and to be as efficient and effective as possible. Uh, the SAM Trans, Reimagine SAM Trans has gone through phase one for community input. And phase two will come back um and start in October of, and I guess next week. Um, and there's a presentation from the Reimagine SAM Trans team, I think at the second meeting in October. This is about revising routes to improve service. And will include adding service to Redwood City and adjusting service to Redwood City on the SAM Trans bus. So, I encourage everyone to pay attention uh to where we're going with this. Um, and where SAM Trans is trying to go and to provide your input. Next, please. One of the key initiatives I'm very proud of is revisioning the way to go pass. I started this in twenty eighteen, maybe even twenty seventeen, and we approved it in August. It was to revision our annual bus pass and to make it more affordable. And so, what you see here is the proposed pricing for either for education. It could be Redwood City School District, Elmont River Shores, or community college students. A thirty-five dollar per semester unlimited bus pass per semester, or for residential um multifamily residents, forty dollars for an annual bus pass, or for smaller businesses, seventy-five dollars. This is a big deal to get riders on SAM Trans and to take public transit. This was approved at the August board meeting, and will start next year as we work through how to sign people up and to distribute the passes. Next, please. The other things that SAM Trans is working on is the Dumbarton Rail Corridor. We own the corridor. How do we build the South Bay uh connection to the East Bay? Regional fair integration. How is there, is it possible to have one price to cover all transit properties in the Bay Area? So, it's one price, one ticket, and to be able to ride from Santa Rosa to San Jose on one ticket. Network coordination, improving the connections between transit properties, bringing back ridership. The Clipper Start Discount. And how do we make sure that there's fair equity amongst income levels? And by twenty forty, we are all required to have an all-electric bus fleet that comes with the buses and the recharging stations. Next. At Caltrain, uh the major project, it's a Peninsula Corridor Electrification Project, or what called PSEP. Construction's underway, and here in Redwood City, we can see the poles going up. All the foundations have been installed in this segment here in the mid peninsula. And so, the poles are going up, followed by the wires. Physical construction will be completed in less than a year. And the first train set is being tested, but will be delivered here on the peninsula within the next six months. What happens after the physical construction is completed in less than a year is going to be year or several months of testing, commissioning, signal and control work to make sure that we can run the train safely on an electrified corridor. Anticipated start of revenue services, Q one of twenty twenty-four. It is late, and the project's over budget, so that is what we're looking for, additional funding. Uh, anywhere from two to three hundred million dollars in round numbers. And so, the Caltrain team, the board is working very hard to talk to our funding partners about additional funding. Next. Other items that are, or Caltrain is working on the board to re- bring ridership back. Caltrain fares are fifty percent off for the month of September. Uh, we just cut the ribbon on the new Hillsdale set, station on Great Separation. Uh, we're starting the corridor-wide Great Separation Study probably next month. And that will go through the local policymaker group, of which Councilmember Smith is a member of. Uh, a major issue at the Caltrain Board is the governance structure. We have our fifth workshop scheduled for this Thursday. And again, fair integration, equity pricing, and network coordination. While the general managers are all working together to make sure Caltrain stops at the same time. There's a Bart train at Millbrae. There's a lot of dynamics that go together in coordinating schedules across the region. Next. Lastly, at the Trans Bay Joint Powers Authority, TJPA. The TJPA is um the manager of the Salesforce Transit Center. The project is in final closeout and leasing activities. The pandemic has kind of put a damper on leasing space and opening new businesses. But if you haven't been to the park, it is an amazing destination in San Francisco. A four-block-long park in the heart of downtown. Um, and through the Mid Peninsula Rail Program MOU, which includes the downtown extension from Fourth and King all the way downtown, Pennsylvania Avenue, Great Separation, and the revisioning of the Fourth and Townsend rail yards. There's a lot of work going on. And the nice thing about what we're going through right now with the current administration in Washington DC, it's an unprecedented time for transportation and infrastructure. Next. What we're working at TJPA is the downtown extension. Um, again, it's to bring Fourth and King and Salesforce to connect the train uh with Caltrain and High School Rail. The San Francisco um CTA has provided funding to take the project to thirty percent engineering. It is a huge regional initiative. And a big deal happened at our last meeting was that the board authorized the project in, to enter in the federal new starts program for funding. This is a multi-billion-dollar project, and by entering the federal new starts program, we're hoping to compete for about a billion dollars in funding for this project. Concurrent with bringing the train all the way down to the Salesforce Transit Center is coordination with Link Twenty-One, which is state to add a new transbay crossing across the bit, bay, potentially taking the train or BART from downtown and adding a new connection to the East Bay. So, Mayor Howard and colleagues, thank you for the time to present some of the things going on in the Bay and the region with regard to transportation, and I'm honored to represent Redwood City on a number of these initiatives.
Thank you, Councilmember G, and thank you, Councilmember Aguirre. Uh, the presentation was really, really informative. Thank you so much for sharing that with us. You do have your work cut out for you, don't you? Be a busy year. Moving on to item B, Peninsula Clean Energy, and Vice Mayor Hale, who sits on Peninsula Clean Energy, will give the update.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I want to say uh it's uh, it's an honor to follow um Councilmember G. I'm just so impressed by the work that you and our other representatives from the county are doing on our behalf. And I just want you to know it is, it does not go unnoticed. Um, it's a huge amount of work, and we're really appreciative. And it in many ways relates to my update, um because you're talking about Caltrain electrification. And so much of the work we're doing at PCE is around elef- electrification and moving to clean energy. So, I'm really honored to be able to present this. I have tremendously enjoyed my time on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board. And I want to say thank you to the mayor for the opportunity to present this. Um, I don't think we've ever had the opportunity to talk in any amount of depth about the work that each of these uh committees do. And you know, for members of the public who's hearing, who are perhaps hearing this for the first time, that what you see, you know, at council meetings is really the tip of the iceberg, and so much of the good work that we get done on your behalf happens on regional committees like this. So, I am very pleased to share with you information that was shared with me this weekend at a five-hour board retreat on Saturday. Um, so you're getting the latest and greatest information. Next slide, please. So, I thought I would take a step back and explain what is Peninsula Clean Energy. Because while many of you likely have opted to use Peninsula Clean Energy for your energy needs, you may not know what it is. So, Peninsula Clean Energy is what's called a community choice aggregation program. It was created in twenty sixteen by our county and all twenty of its cities. They voted to create this entity. And what it is, is it's a community-controlled, non-for-profit joint powers agency that gives our residents and our businesses access to clean uh electric supply. So, what they do is they provide uh alternatives to PG&E. And then the earnings that they make from selling those services are reinvested back into the community in the form of new projects and programs to help further reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, not only is the energy that they're selling cleaner, but then we take the profits and we invest them back into the community. Next slide, please. So, I'm the representative on behalf of the Council for PCE. And in addition to being on the general board, I was appointed this year to the executive board. I've worked on a strategic plan committee. I'm still on the marketing committee, uh and I was previously a board alternate. And I'm pleased that Michael Smith is also uh is now our board alternate. Um, and Michael is already um uh, Councilmember Smith is uh rolling up his sleeves and has already taken on a bo- uh committee assignment as well as a part of our DEIA uh committee. Next slide. So, you are well represented on PCE. Wanted to just highlight a few wins from the past year. Uh, reach codes is something that we passed as a council. There are now twelve agencies in San Mateo County that have passed reach codes. And I've heard that that actually represents a significant number of the reach, of the municipalities that have passed reach codes in the last year. So, San Mateo County is leading the way by example. We've had major progress on EV charging ports. So, we have thirty-five hundred ports in progress. Um, we have been able to attract uh additional funding from the state because of our ability to get these ports installed. Um, and these will have a major contribution to reducing um greenhouse gas emissions over the next decade. And then we've done some really interesting and innovative things with technology that I won't get into here, but let's just say that we're really pushing the envelope on ways that we can provide um clean, green energy. Next slide. A couple of other programs that are focused on underserved communities. We created a very innovative uh used EV program to ser- serve underserved communities with green technology. And then I had the pleasure of working on this e-bikes program together with PCE and Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition, which put two hundred and seventy-six e-bikes into the hands of low-income residents, giving them access to flexible and green cha- um uh transportation. Next slide. Please. And overall, PCE manages a significant portfolio of programs where they are reinvesting those dollars focused on three areas. Building, building efficiency, uh resiliency, and transportation. And so, it's a definitely a compliment to the work being done on Caltrain to get uh individuals to adopt transit alternatives. The main focus is on vehicle uh changes, such as electric vehicles, fleets, um and electric bicycles. Next slide, please. So, that's a quick overview of some successes, and I wanted to just go into depth on one incredibly innovative idea that I hope that you will all feel very proud that we're spearheading. And that is, we have an approach to delivering twenty-four-seven renewable energy by twenty twenty-five. Next slide. So, always good question to ask, why do we have this goal? Basically, if you look at the supply and demand of energy, if we're able to match our electricity supply, if we're able to match our electricity supply on an hourly basis, then we become less reliant on natural gas plants. And we can reduce greenhouse gas emissions much, much better from our electricity supply. And this is not only something we want to do, but it's something we wanted to take a leadership stance on. So we wanted to show other communities that this is possible and it can be done in a cost-effective way. And so we're hoping to innovate on this model and then produce white papers and other information so that other cities can adopt this faster. Climate change is a global issue. We just can't solve it locally. And so we believe an important part of our work is influencing other communities to take bold action. Next slide. So why is 24/7 renewable energy important? Well, reducing emissions in every hour is important, especially in evenings and overnight when the sun isn't shining. If we're able to do this, then we can fully retire some fossil fuel plants. And we can create this blueprint for sustainability that scales. So it's, it's actually very important to the mix. Next slide. And you'll be happy to know that since we set this ambitious goal, many organizations have followed suit. And they range from corporations to NGOs, even the federal government, and even the United Nations have put out work on this. So we really took an early leadership stance on this. And it has been noted in a number of, a number of articles. Next slide. And how does our goal compare to others? Well, as you can see here, it's incredibly ambitious. So we've now been joined by a number of other organizations. And you'll see here even corporations who are looking to make their campuses and their operations 24/7 carbon-free. You see Los Angeles, Des Moines, Iowa, Microsoft and Google. And so again, our goal here is leadership, showing the way for others. And there is no other CCA that's actually pursuing a goal like this. So amongst the CCAs that exist, we will be the first. Next slide. So how do you do this? Well, similar to building a portfolio for investments, it requires building a portfolio for energy. You have to look at which types of clean and renewable energy can be provided at what types a day and in what amounts. And then you need to create a sustainable mix that allows you to meet the demand needs of the community with the right amount of supply. And you can see here the areas that PCE is planning to focus on for our 24/7 goal. And they're substantial. It's a number of different tech, energy technologies. Next slide, please. So at a high level, how this works, for those who are less familiar with it, is that PCE basically invests in these different technologies and delivers energy supply to California's electricity grid. And then the grid distributes it, distributes it to all of the consumers. We receive it and we use it in a variety of ways. Next slide. But it really acts more like a river, if you think about it. It's impossible to track, you know, if, once you pour in that additional supply, you can't track where every molecule, every electron goes. So what we're really trying to do is match our total supply to our customers' total demands. And the timing really matters. Today, the way the accounting is done is on an annual basis. And so what we're really doing is we're saying that we're giving ourselves too much credit by looking at it annually. And by looking at it by 24/7, we're holding ourselves much more accountable to ensuring that everything we're putting in is getting used, is, is green and clean. Next slide, please. So our next steps for this project are, we are actually forming a board subcommittee. And we're going to be working on the modeling and putting together a white paper for how we're going to move forward with this. Thought leadership is a key goal here. And then we're going to be moving into execution starting as early as next year. And then beyond 2025, we'll be moving into a second phase, continuing to evolve the model. So I wanted to share that as one example of a deep dive of just one of the program areas that's really innovative and that could deliver tremendous value, not only for our residents, but ideally in helping influence healthy changes across the country and even across the world. And I'm so very proud of the work that we do on Peninsula Clean Energy. And I'm grateful to support all of you and represent our city on this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. And thank you, Councilmember Smith, for serving on a subcommittee for this important group and organization. Great things to come, very ambitious goals. Thank you so much for your presentation. My thanks to our council members who did that this evening. I felt it was so important for the community to know some of the great work that's going on that we can now share with you. And I look forward to hearing more presentations from our other council members. Moving on to item 10B, which are city council committee reports. Councilmember Ready will give the update on our Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee, which are council members Espinoza, Garnica, Ready and Smith. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you very much, Mayor Howard. The Equity and Social Justice Subcommittee met on September 14th and is meeting again on October 12th. The ESJ focused our most recent meeting on reviewing an equity lens. An equity lens tool developed by the city of Long Beach and discussing how these questions that are in this tool can best be applied in Redwood City. As part of the draft 2021 City Equity Plan that was presented recently in August, the committee is recommending that staff describe how an equity lens has been applied to items that come before council. And you're starting to see that already as, as action items are coming, there's an equity lens attached to it. And so I'm very excited about this process and about the, the future of how equity is going to work as we take action on things in the future. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ready. And my thanks to our, your subcommittee for the work that they're doing with Brianna Evans. So thank you very, very much. We now have our city manager update.
Thank you very much, Mayor Howard. So I have two updates this evening. The first is to share that we have a housing workshop this Thursday from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. It's part of our plan to update our housing element. As we know, and you've described tonight, your housing is the city council's top priority and is important to many in our community. And one way we make sure that we're making progress on meeting housing needs is to update the housing element. It's part of our city's general plan. So at this Zoom meeting on Thursday, you'll be inviting residents to provide feedback on community values that have been identified to date related to housing, to share input on zoning strategies and to help figure out where we can add additional housing in Redwood City. So members of the community may sign up and register for this meeting at welcomehomerwc.org. And then second, I just wanted to let the community know that we're continuing our expansion of in-person city services. And on October 11th, we expect to be able to increase the number of days that we're providing in-person services at City Hall to three days a week. And additionally, that same week of October 11th, I believe that we'll be able to offer pre-pandemic level library hours. So look for final details in the next couple of weeks. But we're making great progress as a community and as a city to returning to the kinds of activities that we've seen and appreciated in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Well, this has been a really good meeting tonight. Thank you all for the participation. We'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of a longtime Redwood City resident and friend, Edna Mangini. I would like to turn it over now to Councilmember Aguirre, who will tell us more about Edna's long, wonderful life. Councilmember Aguirre?
Thank you, Mayor. It's my honor to share with you the life of this amazing woman who was my neighbor. So Edna Mangini Pancino passed away peacefully at home in Redwood City, California on August 23rd, 2021, after a short illness just a few weeks shy of her 99th birthday. Born in Los Angeles to parents who immigrated from Liguria and Sicily, Italy. She grew up with her older sister Mary in a vibrant community of Italian-Americans and graduated from Sacred Heart High School in the Lincoln Heights neighborhood of Los Angeles. As a young woman, Edna put her sharp mind to work in the bank. While visiting her cousin Amubet Sigalupi in San Francisco, another cousin, John Rochelli, introduced her to his partner in their pharmacy business, Nat Mangini. Edna and Nat were married in 1943, shortly before he was deployed to the European Front in World War II. After his return, they built a life together in Redwood City, raising two sons, Michael and Richard, while operating several locations of Lock Drug Company in Redwood City, a community pharmacy complete with soda fountains and hair salons, as was customary in the 1950s. While managing the family home, Edna was very active in local volunteer work with the Mount Carmel Catholic Church, Bellarmine College, Preparatory School and Sequoia Hospital. After her children were grown, she played a significant role in running Lock Drug Company as bookkeeper, product buyer and human resources manager. She and Nat retired in 1996 and Nat passed away in 1997. They were married for 53 years. Although she never saw the spotlight, Edna was recognized matriarch of the Mangini family, making sure that everyone had what they needed to succeed in life while inspiring them with her business acumen, sense of style and lifelong love for learning. Her home and garden were central to family gatherings, especially for the incredible meals she created there. No matter when someone showed up at her house, Edna would find a way to feed them something delicious served with inevitable flair and attention to detail. Beyond her magical talents in the kitchen, Edna was a wonderful company. She was incredibly intelligent and witty with a sharp, dry sense of humor. There was always a twinkle in her pale blue eyes, which reflected the somewhat mischievous little sister she was said to have been. In her later years, Edna was a fun grandmother and great-grandmother. Edna is survived by her two sons, five grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren, all of whom were Miss her dearly.
Thank you so very much, Councilmember Aguirre. She was a lovely woman. So we will now adjourn in memory of Edna Mangini to our next council meeting, which is scheduled for October the 11th, 2021. Have a good week and everyone stay healthy and safe. We're adjourned.